Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to call, to order the regular meeting of the South San Francisco City Council for Wednesday, October 22, 2025. Can I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
Councilmember Nagales.
Here.
Councilmember Nicholas.
Present.
Vice Mayor Adiego.
Here.
Mayor Flores.
I'm present. Next item. Tonight, we're honored to have Scott Senior lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Scott is a proud member of our South San Francisco community and serves as a dedicated volunteer with our Community Emergency Response Team, also known as CERT. He's also a passionate advocate for disability awareness and inclusion. Please join me in welcoming Scott to the podium. And if you are able to, yes. And if you are able to, please stand and place your right hand over your heart and follow Scott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much. Proceeding with the meeting. Next item, please.
Agenda review. Mayor Flores, we do have two changes to the agenda this evening. First, item number 24, which is the Proclamation Recognizing United Against Hate Week, we'd like to move that up to follow the last proclamation, so it would be proclamation number five. And then the second item is during our closed session, we noticed two workers' comp hearings, and we'll only be hearing the one that's not, doesn't have the name of the individual.
Very well. Accepted and taken into the record. Next item, please.
We'll move along to Levine Act disclosures. Does the council have any reporting? And then, move along to announcements from staff.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I was looking for library staff, but I'll fill in here, to talk about the film screening, Song of the Fireflies, is this Saturday, October 25th, from 11:00 a.m. Oh, there's two screenings, one's at 11:00 and one's at 2:00. And his second announcement is the trivia challenge, 30-second annual, and it is Friday, November 7th. It's being held at the Conference Center. $65 general admission, and it's so worth it. It's super fun, and dinner's delicious. And if you're interested in having a team, teams of three, it's $400 with dinner. And contact Project REED for any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Eddy, members of the council. Rich Lee, your Assistant City Manager, on behalf of Councilmember Nagales, wanted to invite the South San Francisco community to a Senior Scam Stopper Seminar. That's going to be held on Tuesday, November 18th, at the Social Hall in the LPR. All are welcome, and certainly want to promote this loud and clear. Wanted to perhaps offer the council member an opportunity to further elaborate on this event.
Thank you, Rich. I wanted to put this event together because I got a frantic phone call from my parents, because they received a call, allegedly was claiming to be a police officer, claiming that my sister was in a severe car accident. And as the conversation was going on, it was very clear that this person was trying to scam my parents. Thank God my parents were smart enough to realize, to hang up the phone. But unfortunately, there are people who get scammed by this, and so I thought it was important that we partner with our police department to put together this scam stopper event, to educate our residents about scams are going on in our community and how to prevent those. So I thank Chief Campbell and our PD to partner with me, and I invite the community to come out and learn some really, really important information. So on Tuesday, November 18th, please come, and we will definitely educate our public about how we can prevent scams in South San Francisco. So thank you, Assistant City Manager, Rich Lee.
Thank you for bringing that up. You know, myself and Councilmember Coleman, we held these same in our district. This was probably one of the largest-attended community meetings I had in District 5 as well. They were very pleased of the information, and it is definitely worth doing every year. So thank you to my colleague for doing that.
And this is also part of our action plan for the each spread.
Also, thank you for highlighting that. Thank you. All right. Any other announcements? Staff announcements?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Good evening, Greg Mitiati, Director of Parks and Recreation, with two quick announcements. First, all are invited to attend our annual holiday boutique and makers fair, which takes place on Saturday, November 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. here at the LPR. We invite all to come and support local vendors, enjoy a day of shopping, which features unique, one-of-a-kind, handcrafted jewelry and other items, and refreshments will be provided. And secondly, next slide, we encourage all to join us for our 52nd Annual Thanksgiving Fun Run, which will take place on November 22nd at Oyster Point. The run will begin at 9:00 a.m. sharp. Participants will be awarded prizes for top finishers in each age group, and pre-registration is required by November 15th. For more details on both of these events, you can visit our website, ssfc.gov/reck. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Eddy, Vice Mayor Adiego, and council members. Matt Sampson, your Fire Chief. For those who are not too tired after Thanksgiving Fun Run on the 22nd, the Fire Department's inviting the public to Fire Station 61 for the opportunity to take a picture with Santa Claus on a fire engine. We're doing it a little bit earlier this year. For those that are looking for ideas for their holiday cards, they can grab a picture with the family with Santa on the fire engine from 1:00 till 3:00 on the 22nd. The event is free. We are asking those who can to help with our diaper donation as part of this ongoing process we're doing now with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Hello, and it's Marie Pate again, with the City Manager's Office, with three final announcements. The first is, please join us Thursday, November 13th, for the State of the City Luncheon at the South City Conference Center. It's from 11:30 to 1:30, and this is a public meeting, so all are welcome. And we do have a luncheon for $55, and you can purchase tickets through Eventbrite or stop by City Hall and see me. Mayor Eddy will reflect on accomplishments from 2025, and will incorporate a preview at the November 12th council meeting here. So scan the QR code for additional information. The holiday food and toy distribution plans have begun. Thanks to our Fire Police, YMCA Community Resource Center, the ball is rolling towards another wonderful holiday season for community members. Toys for infants through 11 years old can be brought to our police station or fire department, beginning November 14th through December 12th. Monetary donations are welcome for South San Francisco kids ages 12 to 17, because we'll be getting Target gift cards. And if you or your family need food or toys, please visit YMCA at 1486 Huntington Avenue. And if you're interested in volunteering, I'll be sending a call for Volunteers eBlast out early November, or email me at marie.patea@ssfc.gov. And if you're a business that wants to have a bin for donations, Mary Ann Spidiacci at our police department is your best contact. And lastly, on behalf of Mary Prem, who's our CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, she's inviting everyone to one of my most favorite events. Next slide, please, is Taste of South San Francisco. Tickets are $65 and can be purchased through the Chamber's website. If you haven't been before, this event showcases our restaurants and caterers from the area, and you get to sample delicious food, and often we vote for our favorites, too. And this is taking place on Thursday, November 6th, from noon to 2:00, and tickets will not be sold at the door, so please pre-purchase. It's well worth it. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other staff announcements? We did do the library one. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate that. Thank you. Alrighty. Lots of activities, as you can see, from trivia, to eating out, to lots of celebrations and holiday stuff coming up. If you're anything like my family, we have about a week of October left. November 1st, officially Christmas starts, right? Next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Move along to presentations. Item number one, 2025 Fire Prevention Poster Contest winners.
Thank you very much. Both my colleagues to my right and left said, wow, Eddy, you really know how to pack a room tonight. Well, it's a special night, because I always really get excited, as an educator, when we have our youth, our leaders in the room, and of course, welcoming parents and guardians in our community. It's really exciting to be here. I'm gonna do a few shout-outs. I see Principal Debbie Mert from Monteverde, Principal Craig Ramage from Burry-Bury, and our own trustee Lamb from the school board here, to celebrate our kiddos, our scholars, tonight. You know, it's a joy to be here, to be able to recognize South San Francisco's most creative and thoughtful young minds. This is our 2025 Fire Prevention Poster Contest winners. All of you have been thoughtful, and all these students that we're honoring tonight, their artwork didn't just show their talent, but it showed really their heart for South San Francisco. It showed their imagination for what they see our city to be like, and a real understanding, in their mind, at their level, of how important fire safety is in our homes. Now, this is a very important aspect, because at learning levels, every kid kind of sees the world in a different light. And of course, incorporating what that means in terms of fire safety for their schools and their neighborhoods. And I want to thank each one of the contest winners. I want to in particular thank the parents, the guardians, the family members, who are our community and are here, supporting and making sure that those entries were submitted, because all of you together have helped put together and spread a message, a message that could really save lives. And you did it with creativity, you've done it with color, and you've done it with courage. So even those who were voluntold and probably didn't want to submit one, but you did it anyway, here you are, being recognized by the city council and the mayor of South San Francisco. So again, to the families, the teachers, the supporters here tonight, thank you for encouraging these young artists, our leaders here in our community, and helping them shine. And I'd like to mention into the record each one of them, the following are this year's 2025 contest winners. Andrea Sanchez Govea, Ona Sang, Lilian Gudale, Theo Ramirez, Ariel Nicholas, Eva Ramirez, Valeria Gutierrez, Alexandra Castaneda, Eric Yun, Charlize Bay Summerling, Kashi Sasha, and Kaia Arellano. Now, as we call all of you up, you'll receive a certificate, and I want to make sure that all of you see what you're getting, and the parents, a certificate of recognition to each of one. We'll also take a picture, as a group picture, with the entire city council. And each certificate recognizes the name of the student, their school, as well as their grade, and some of them, their teachers, which class they're in. The City Council of South San Francisco does hereby congratulate you on being a winner, a true winner, on the 2025 Fire Prevention Poster Contest. We wish you success in your pursuit of your dreams, aspirations, and future career. It's presented on the 22nd of this month, and is signed by myself as mayor, and all the members of this city council. In addition to that, because of course, you are the future and our bright, shining leaders, all of you are also getting the special city pin, which you can all wear. It's a special distinction. It has, it's a brand-new version. It has City Hall engraved, and a little tiny key to the city. So all of you, as you not only treasure this certificate and put it up in the wall in your bedrooms, know that you have the key to unlock the success and the future leadership here in South San Francisco. So please help me welcome every single one of these winners up to the podium, and let's give them a big old South San Francisco shout-out. All right. So, boys and girls, if you could line up right here, and I'm gonna call your name, and as I call your name, you're gonna come and grab your certificate, and then we're all gonna do a big picture. Is that understood? Yes? Okay, great. All right. Charlize Bay Summerlin. Charlize? There you are. Congratulations. Kakashi Sasha. Saha. Saha. Thank you. There you are. Kaia Arellano. Kaia. There you go. Eric Jin. Eric? Okay. I'm not sure Eric gets it. Andrea Sanchez Govea. Alexandra Castaneda. Valeria Gutierrez. Ariel Nicholas. Eva Ramirez. Theo Ramirez. Lilian Gudal. And Ona Sang. All right. So now, if I could invite the members of my council, if you all could come up, and we're gonna get right here in the middle, and I want you all to open up your certificate. So look at me, so you can see what I'm doing. Open it up, so that in the picture, your name comes up. Make sure it's upright. Yes, and we're all gonna move this way. So scoot down this way, to your right, to your right. Scoot down that way. Keep walking, keep walking. More, 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 more. Keep walking. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. All right. All right. Now, I want all the certificates to be right here. Don't cover your face, because I want your smiles to go up. All right.
How about the stage?
Great. Yes, yes, yes. Let's get, let's get all of you up on the stage. Can you guys do that? Yeah, of course. Make sure everyone has their certificate. All right. Here we go. Cameras ready? All right. Congratulations. All right. Exciting. Thank you all for attending and being here, present to witness that. We'll move on to the next item, please.
Item number two is a proclamation recognizing October as Disability Awareness Month.
Thank you. And I've asked Councilmember Coleman to make this presentation. Oh, before that, I also wanted to recognize Ponderosa Principal. I think she was here. She stepped out. Julie Ersting was also here. Councilmember?
Great. Thank you so much for the honor of presenting this proclamation commemorating Disability Awareness Month here in South San Francisco, and this is something that is personal to me, as, you know, I was growing up through my childhood. For those who don't know me, my father fell down the stairs when I was five years old and suffered a traumatic injury. It left him largely paralyzed from the waist down, and he remained disabled until he passed away 10 years later, when I was at the age of 15. And growing up with that experience, it made me realize, you know, how important infrastructure is, how important policy is, in ensuring that everyone is able to live their lives with dignity and to fullness of their ability, regardless of their ability. Disability Awareness Month is a time to reflect and to recognize and recommit ourselves to building a more inclusive and equitable community for all. And every October, we join communities across the country in observing National Disability Employment Awareness Month. This month was first established by President Truman in 1945, and later strengthened by the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act in 1990. This month reminds us of the essential contributions that disabled Americans make to our workplaces, our economy, and our nation. This year's theme is celebrating value and talent. It is a powerful call to action. It reminds us that when we create workplaces and communities that welcome the talents of all people, including those with disabilities, we are building a stronger, more vibrant society. Yet, we know that there is still more work to do. Studies have shown that Americans with disabilities still face many barriers to fair pay and economic advancement. That's why this month, and every single month, we must continue the legacy of generations of disability rights advocates who have fought for equal opportunity, integrated workplaces, and economic self-sufficiency. Tonight, I'm especially proud to recognize someone who embodies the spirit of service and inclusion that we strive for, Scott Sinore. Scott is a proud resident of South San Francisco District 4, and he's also a passionate advocate for disability awareness and inclusion. He serves our city as a dedicated member of the South San Francisco Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, and his leadership and commitment to public safety, community engagement, and accessibility are deeply appreciated. Earlier this month, Scott's artwork was featured in the Disabilities Art Showcase in Redwood City, which is a powerful exhibit that gives voices to artists with disabilities and reminds us of the beauty and strength that comes from diverse perspectives. Scott's work and his presence in our community are a testament to the value and talent that we celebrate this month. So tonight, on behalf of the city of South San Francisco, I am honored to present this proclamation, recognizing October as Disability Awareness Month, and reaffirm our city's commitment to equal opportunity, full participation, and independent living for people with disabilities in our infrastructure as well as our policy. So please join me in welcoming and thanking Scott Sinore.
Mayor Flores, Vice Mayor, City Council, and guests, I'd like to thank you for selecting me as a recipient for the proclamation recognizing October as Disability Awareness Month. I also want to thank the members of CERT who are here, Ken Anderson, Chief Samuelson, for giving me the opportunity to join the CERT team in 2013. I also want to thank my parents and Kerry for their ongoing support. As a CERT member, in 2013, I heard that South San Francisco had a volunteer community emergency response team. As a child, I've always loved fire trucks and ambulance and stuff like that, so I decided to inquire. So knowing about the physical qualifications, I didn't think I would qualify, but I passed through an acquired obstacle course, which entailed going through a tube on your belly with a 40-pound pack of emergency supplies in a backpack. And I made it through with applause. As far as I know, I'm the only physically challenged person to join the CERT team, as far as I know. Since I have lived in South San Francisco, I have come along, the city has come a long way, making the city accessible for people with special needs, as the curb cuts and accessible buildings and signages. But as we all know, we still need more designated parking spaces for disabled downtown. Once again, I thank you for selecting me and presenting me with this disabled proclamation tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. Next item, please.
Item number three is a proclamation recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you. And I've asked Councilmember Nagales to make this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we gather here this October, we are reminded that this month holds a very special meaning. It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It's a time we come together to honor survivors, remember those we've lost, and reaffirm our commitment to education, early detection, and research. Breast cancer touches so many lives, mothers, daughters, sisters, friends, and even men. It doesn't discriminate, and its impact is felt in every community. But there's also hope, because today, thanks to awareness, research, and early testing, more people are surviving breast cancer than ever before. Early detection saves lives. It's as simple and as powerful as that. Regular screenings and mammograms can find cancer at its earliest stages, when it's most treatable. Too often, people delay testing because they feel healthy or because they're afraid. But taking that step, making that appointment, can make all the difference. We must continue to spread the message that getting tested is not just about taking care of yourself, it's an act of love for your family, your friends, and your community. When we encourage others to get screened, we're helping to protect futures, to preserve memories, and to give hope. This month, pink is not just a color, but it's a commitment, a commitment to awareness, to support, and to action. Let's uplift those who are currently fighting and celebrate those who have survived, and continue to push for a cure so that future generations will live in a world free of breast cancer. And if you look up at Sign Hill Tree, you'll see that's been illuminated in pink. And thank you to our amazing Fire Department for bringing Breast Cancer Awareness stickers. And finally, I want to take a moment to thank the incredible doctors, surgeons, nurses, and medical teams who dedicate their lives to caring for those battling breast cancer. Their expertise, compassion, and tireless commitment bring comfort and hope to patients and families during their toughest times. I'm grateful to the doctors and surgeons who treated my mom. Their care and kindness made all the difference to our family. They are unsung heroes in this fight, and we honor them today and every day, especially the person who will be accepting this proclamation, Dr. Alice Ye, who operated on my mom and saved her life. Thanks to healing our medical team, my mom is right there in the audience, and she can say she's a breast cancer survivor.
So thank you. I'm gonna stop crying now, and ask Dr. Ye to come up and take this, receive this proclamation. Wonderful. Welcome, both. We're going right here.
I know you have to stay in my place. I'm gonna go over here. Stay with me here, I'm gonna stay with you. Councilmember Nagales, Mayor Flores, members of the City Council, and city staff, I'm quite emotional too. Thank you for this opportunity to be here in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I was truly touched by your kind words, and grateful for the opportunity to care for your mother. Gina is very special. The moment I met her, I knew that we had a bond, and she did all the right things. She got a screening mammogram, which detected her early breast cancer. And I'm proud to say and very happy also that she's free of her cancer, and she's a breast cancer survivor. Compared to the national average, Kaiser Permanente screening rates are 12% higher than for breast cancer, and we pride ourselves in preventing cancer in the first place with our evidence-based approach to healthcare, which emphasizes wellness and prevention. By catching the cancer early, so just for Gina, we help our patients get the prompt access, treatment, in a multidisciplinary fashion, which leads to better outcomes. And so now it's several months after her surgery, and she's doing well, and I believe this is the first time she's ever seen my face fully since I had always been wearing a mask. So I'm very, very proud to be a Kaiser Permanente staff member and caring for our community, and I'm so proud of what Gina has gone through. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you. Thank you. Very meaningful. Thank you, Councilmember Nagales. Next item, please.
Item number four is a proclamation recognizing October as Italian Heritage Month.
Thank you. I have the privilege of doing this. I checked in and got the blessing from my colleague here to the right, but you know what makes it so beautiful here in South City is that we're all really, our cultures are really united. And that's not just an initiative. Councilmember Nagales moved forward during his year as mayor, but also it really resonates to the culture and the fabric of South City. I continue to say that this city was built and brought together on the backs of our immigrant community, and that also includes the wonderful and cultural heritage that our Italian community did in the early years as this city was founded. We recognize October as National Italian American Heritage Month because of the rich history, the enduring values, and the countless contributions that Italian Americans have given to our nation and locally, right here to South San Francisco. President George H.W. Bush first proclaimed this observance in 1989, and since then, October has served a moment of reflection on the journey of more than 18 million Americans of Italian descent, whose stories are woven really into the fabric of our regions and in our country. From the early explorers to the 5.5 million working-class immigrants who arrived between 1820 and 2000, Italian Americans have helped to shape the U.S. with resilience, with creativity, and an unwavering commitment to a family and a community. Here in South City, we're proud that our Italian-American roots, including the legacy of David Rato, who in 1936 became the first Italian-American to serve as mayor of our city. And across the country, Italian-Americans have left really an indelible mark in every field, from Dr. Fauci's leadership in public health, to Mario Capucci's Nobel Prize-winning work in medicine, to cultural icons like Frank Sinatra, hey, including Lady Gaga, yes, and Guy Fieri. We all, us foodies, love Guy Fieri. But really beyond the headlines and the history books, Italian-Americans here at a local level, it's about the heritage, it's about the community, it's about speaking loud and eating those big, beautiful Sunday night meals. These values have helped communities like South San Francisco inspire generations and contribute to the arts, to education, to science, to business, and of course, as well to public service. Tonight, our City Council proudly proclaims October as National Italian American Heritage Month, and we encourage the community to take time to learn more about the rich history. I myself love the history here in South San Francisco and being able to see all the cultural significance of what the City Council was and brought in the early 1900s and through the '30s and '40s and '50s as well. And within that, there's a strong presence here, and that's the Italian-American Club of South City, SSF IACC, which was founded also in 1936 by a group of Italian immigrants who wanted to create a space of fellowship, of cultural preservation, and of civic engagement. And over the decades, the club has really expanded, has played a vital role in supporting our local community, celebrating our local heritage by having now, you know, the big, beautiful Festa Italiana. If you weren't able to catch it this past September, it was beautiful, it was loud, it was boisterous, it was cultural, it was all that we wanted it to be. And of course, they contribute to charitable causes as well. This organization has been a hub for social events, for scholarships, and for partnering with our South City residents all across many generations. So tonight, I'd like to issue this proclamation on behalf of this City Council, and joining us to accept this proclamation is Mr. Manny Garcia, who's the Vice President of the Italian-American Citizens Club, and also joining him is the Chairman of the Board of Directors, our own former Mayor, Rich Garberino. Please give him a warm welcome as they come up to the podium.
gratitude. I have been a member for the Bocchi Club for over 15 years now. I'm also the Bocchi Sports Director, which I run all the events through me, all the tournaments, everything, plus summer camp for the kids for summer. And I had to stop the special need program this year because of my health problem, I had some health problems, but I'm gonna start it up next year, so I'll be having the Ability Path Association community come back, and I'll have like six classes that I will be teaching myself, because I love it. I love special needs people, and I'm happy to tell you tonight that I got an email that they want to have a special tournament, which is gonna run close to two to three months for the Olympics. And I'm not too familiar with what's going on, I'm hoping it's for special needs, because it'll be fantastic. So it'll be going on from April to like June, and it'll probably be running it because of schedules and stuff on a Saturday, and they're very flexible on time and stuff like that. But I just want to mention that, also that we are so proud of the Italian-American Citizen Club, we have almost 400 members now, and our club is growing. We are partnership with Park and Rec, we're having all kinds of things, being construction over there right now, they took away the garden, and we're building a barbecue area plus a area where people come in and enjoy to sit down when we have like dinners and barbecues and stuff like that. And so anyway, I'll keep it short, but thank you very much for your award.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you.
Again, thank you for this award. I just want to say, as a hyphenated citizen, Italian-American citizen, we stand proudly with our brothers and sisters who are also hyphenated citizens, because we have all contributed so much to this country and to this city. It means a lot to us to receive this tonight. Thank you for recognizing us, we really appreciate it, and thank you for the work that you all do.
Thank you, man. Thank you. Thank you. Next item, please.
We'll move along to item number 24, which is a proclamation recognizing United Against Hate Week, October 19th, 25th, 2025.
Thank you, and I've asked my colleague, Councilmember Nicholas, to make this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, South San Francisco stands for diversity, inclusivity, and respect for all, regardless of your race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or abilities. When cities and their residents work together against hate, we can restore respect and civil discourse, enhance the strength of diversity, and build inclusive and equitable communities for all. We work together with our fellow California cities as we send a resounding message that we resolve to combat hate and recognize this week as United Against Hate Week. We endorse also California versus Hate Coalition's mission. We urge our community members to report any hate incidents to A338NoHate or online at CaliforniaVersusHate.org to combat hate effectively. On behalf of the entire City Council, I would like to present this proclamation to one of our volunteer extraordinaire, a CERT member, who not only has love for the city but to all. I would like to call on Sunny Koya to meet me at the podium and accept this proclamation recognizing October 19th to the 25th as United Against Hate Week.
Let's welcome Sunny up.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Nicholas. Thank you all for allowing me to receive this proclamation on behalf of everyone in South San Francisco, and I share this with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd also, before we move to the next item, wanted to call out the posters we all have received as well. "South San Francisco Stands United Against Hate," "Sur San Francisco Permanece Unido En Contra Del Odio." These are as well going to be promoted through our social media and whatnot, and if you want one, please come to the City Manager's Office, and we'll give you information on what that looks like. Thank you again, Councilmember Nicholas, for making that presentation. We'll move on to next item, please.
We'll move along to council comments and requests.
Awesome. Who'd like to kick us off and start this evening?
I think I'd like to go first.
Please.
For a change, to mix it up a little bit. So you may not know, but one of my simple pleasures on Sunday morning is to actually pick up and enjoy the Sunday newspaper. And I'm of an age where I still enjoy newsprint and getting my information in that manner, because all week long, I'm dealing with this. So on Sunday, it's a little bit different. And imagine my surprise when on September the 28th, I picked up, my favorite section is Insight, which used to be called the editorial section. Imagine my surprise, where I saw that there was this tremendous article written by Carol Matsumoto, someone that I had the, well, both the pleasure and the challenge of serving with for a number of years. And the article was about her early life, the challenges that she had as a Japanese-American infant being sent to Manzanar. And the article was talking about an executive order that our president had recently made back in March, where anything that was disparaging to America or its peoples or its past needed to be removed from websites, or from the parks, or any type of building, so nothing disparaging. And she talks about that, and I really do need to give this justice, if you'll indulge me, there's a couple of paragraphs that complete her editorial that I think are simply borderline brilliant. So, and these are her words, closing her article. "I have walked the dusty paths of Manzanar as a former prisoner, public official, and citizen. I have stood before generations of young people and told them the truth about what happened there, not to divide us, but to remind us that democracy is fragile, justice must be guarded, and freedom is never guaranteed if we forget how easily it can be taken away. To suggest that acknowledging the harm done to Japanese-Americans, Native Americans, African-Americans, or others whose histories have been marked by injustice is anti-American, is to misunderstand the very essence of America. We are not a nation made weaker by our reflection, we are a nation made stronger by our resolve and active efforts to do better." And Carol, I thought this was brilliant, I wanted to share it with my colleagues in the community, and it's a lot, it's a lot to consider, you know, as we move ahead and deal with challenges to our democracy.
Thank you.
The next item, our mayor is sometimes called out of town to attend conferences, and as the Vice Mayor, sometimes I'm fortunate in that he's called away when there's a great event to go to. So on October the 7th, there was a great event in South San Francisco. There is a resident who lives at Westport Royale Retirement Home, his name is Edmund Bordanave, and he was a veteran of, is a veteran of World War II. He was born in 1923, so he is now 102 years old, and on June the 6th in 1944, he found himself on the beaches of Normandy, participating in the D-Day invasion. He was either 20 or 21 on that June day. So he received the French consulate, set the Consul General and some staff, to our town to present him with the French Medal of Honor. And I arrived with the city pin, the one with the key, it's not the French Medal of Honor, but I wanted to tell you that when I read the certificate that the mayor had given me, and he was naming October 7th as Edmund Bordanave Day in South San Francisco, the assembled residents of Westport Royale really cheered for that, so we had our moment, Mr. Mayor. But I just wanted to share with the community that it really was like being in a room with a little bit of history, I know you would have enjoyed it, and I made the most of it. Moving ahead, received some communication from the South San Francisco Women's Club, and they are putting together a fundraiser. If, it has to do with Veterans Day, Veterans Day is coming up on the 11th. Seems like all of my comments are like very historical, and yeah, anyway, that's where I find myself at 70 years of age. So they're doing a fundraiser for the Veterans Home that's in Colma, that we stay actively involved with, and your donation of $10 will result in a flag being placed in the front portion of the Women's Club on Grand Avenue, and you can dedicate it to a veteran who's here, or a veteran who has passed, and you can put a little message with it. And I think that it's a wonderful, we all have veterans in our families that at least have served in the past, and it's a great way to remember them. So if you're interested in participating with that, it's kind of a short timeframe, they've got to have the information within the next 10 days, and the South San Francisco Women's Club, if you go to their website, it's, and you go to Events, and there's a printable flyer that'll tell you everything you need to know. And I think that that's it for me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor, and also for standing in and representing on our behalf, that indeed was a very significant, very important recognition, and we're proud that we were able to recognize, when he's still alive as well too. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Nagales?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Vice Mayor Adiego. I had texted our former colleague, Carol Matsumoto, about the article, and I was actually gonna read a portion of this, he kind of beat me to it, so.
I went first?
I went first, so, but it kind of helps me pivot to a couple things. to a couple of things I wanted to say. I've been deeply concerned by the reports that are coming out that the president's going to be sending ICE to the Bay Area. These reports have caused fear, confusion, and anxiety in our communities. Families are worried about loved ones being taken away. Children are afraid to go to school, and people who contribute every single day to our neighborhoods are feeling targeted simply because of where they were born. Let me be clear. Here in South San Francisco, here in South San Francisco, we stand with our immigrant community. We'll always have, and we always will. Our city is proud of its diversity. It's what makes us who we are. Immigrants helped build this city. They opened up small businesses, strengthened our school, care for our elderly, and contribute to the progress that defines South San Francisco today. We understand that this is a frightening time. The threat of raids and enforcement action creates trauma that ripples far beyond anyone's household. It undermines trust, trust between residents and law enforcement, between families and schools, between communities and their government. That's not the kind of fear we will ever accept here. Our city will continue to stand for compassion, fairness, and dignity. It will not turn our backs on our neighbors. It will not allow fear to divide us. We will keep working with our partners, our local organizations, and our residents to ensure that South San Francisco remains a welcoming and safe community for everyone, for everyone, no matter where they come or what language they speak or what papers they carry. To all our immigrant families, you are seen, and you are valued, and you belong here in South San Francisco. So now I'll get off my soapbox, Mr. Mayor. It's been a while since we've kind of seen each other. And there's been a lot of events that I attended. Along with Councilmember Nicholas, we got to celebrate Jamel Ray. I'm sorry, Councilmember Coleman, thank you. We got to celebrate Jamel Ray's 70th birthday. He was the owner of Fort McKinley. And I got to tell you, that place, if you haven't gone, you should really go. It's a lot of great events, especially great food. I want to thank staff, especially public works staff. If you travel up Westboro Boulevard and pass Westboro Middle School, you'll see this kind of curb extension. And that came out of the Safe Routes to School audit that we did, where we walked with several teachers and parents to kind of see what we can do to improve safety on Westboro Boulevard. And it's been a big hit amongst the students there and also parents. So thank you, staff, and Jeanette also as well for putting that video together. It was really, really important. I've been kind of doing this onsite tours with residents with specific areas in Westboro, where there's been a lot of traffic concerns and safety concerns. I want to thank Eugene Kim and Assistant City Manager Rich Lee for going with me to Wexford. And then on Friday, we're going to Avalon Drive. On my side, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Camarena, on my side of Westboro, where we've seen some speeding up on Avalon. So we're going to go there with staff. So I want to thank staff. Along with Vice Mayor Adiego and Councilwoman Nicholas, we attended the Kiwanis Insulation Dinner. And congratulations to all the incoming officers. I look forward to working with you. And we all attended the Chamber Insulation Dinner. I got to say, that was such a great event, seeing the community come together and recognize all our amazing businesses in South San Francisco. And I got to tell you, the walkout music for each awardee was phenomenal. I think that should be played every time, at every event. And then also, there's the Northeast Medical Services, NEMS, is a new medical facility just opened in downtown South San Francisco. You might recognize them. They're well-known in San Francisco, and they have a facility in Daly City. They opened up a new hospital here in South San Francisco. And I got to tell you, it is a phenomenal site. And the fact that there's additional health care being provided in our community is so important, especially since there's a fear by a lot of people that their health care coverage is going away. So thank you to NEMS for coming to South San Francisco and stepping up and providing essential health care coverage, not only to South San Francisco, but overly for the North County. And then along with several of my colleagues, attended the Future Lab anniversary, it was the 10th anniversary at Genentech. And we were greeted and welcomed by our state superintendent, Tony Thurman. And it was such a great event. And congratulations to Genentech and to Future Lab, and really all our students who have the opportunity to kind of go through this ability to learn about STEM. And want to thank also staff for the Truck and Treat event. It was funny, both the city manager and the assistant city manager were both dressed up as ringmasters. I thought that was really hilarious, especially since I would think, I was thinking about going dressed up as well, so. And then lastly, I wanted to adjourn in memory for someone that I know well, and I know that Councilmember Nicholas knew well, was Mariko Enriquez. He was probably one of the first Filipinos in San Mateo County to ever be appointed to a county-wide commission. And he was really well-known in the community to bring people together. And he also put together the big PASIC event I think many of us have been invited to, where it's kind of an all-day event, where you kind of go to service, and then you come to the ceremony at the end. But, you know, it was just great to see the community come together. And Mariko was really a person that kind of put that together. And so I wanted to adjourn in his memory and to thank him for all his many years of service. And may his memory be a blessing to all that knew him. So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Councilmember Nicholas. Councilmember Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to echo your concern about the current news about the immigration enforcement here in the Bay Area. And, you know, it sends down chills down my spine because I grew up in the Philippines during martial law and all this threat that ICE people and the National Guard will be deployed here really brings me back to those unpleasant memories. Thank you to the library staff, namely Bobby, Rachel, Jessie, and Luella, who made it possible for us to usher in the celebration of the Filipino-American History Month through the special storytime that was held last October 11th. We are also very grateful for the participation of Bautista Books. Lloyd was very generous in sharing his books, and also Red Basket, that donated a lot of pan de salas. Congratulations also to the Chamber of Commerce, the newly installed officers and award winners. The Galas, Councilmember Nicholas, was really something to be raving. People are still raving about how everything was handled. And for the NEMS, we all attended the opening of that one. And that's also, I was told by their CEO that they also take care of uninsured and low-income families. And during my conversation with him, he also is very interested in affordable housing. They're also into housing development. They actually, of all places, they had housing development in Oahu. So affordable housing in Oahu, that's great. And then also, Tuesday's 10th year anniversary of amazing community partners here was celebrated last Friday, the YMCA Community Resource Center and Genentech's Future Lab. We also had two very successful events at the Orange Park, Orange Memorial Park, last Saturday. The community came out for the Halloween extravaganza. Congratulations to our Parks and Rec Department. And also, we had our annual flu vaccine. Many of our city departments also participated in the trunk or treat. And it was really a great job. We took advantage of the fun and ensured that everyone is ready for the flu season. We also hosted the also Student Council at City Hall yesterday. Was it yesterday? Seems like so many things are happening. The young student leaders had a city hall tour and got their questions answered regarding local government. I was amazed with the questions they asked. And also, I would like to join the, request the adjournment of the meeting in memory of Ruffo Macraeg, who lost his battle with lung cancer.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Coleman?
Thank you. I also want to join in and react to the recent news of CBP, ICE, and potentially National Guard being used politically to strike fear in the city of San Francisco and the entire Bay Area, ramping up attacks on our cities to divide us, distract us, and really cover up their failures. They said that they would focus on criminals, but they lied. Instead, they are tearing families apart by detaining moms, dads, and hard-working people. And now they're flooding our communities with troops and checkpoints to further terrorize our immigrant communities and make us all feel afraid. It was never about safety. It's about political theater. Prices are up. Life is becoming more expensive. And they are threatening cuts on all of our health care. What they are trying to do is induce fear and issue retribution to our cities for standing up against the administration. While our working families struggle, they're spending $1 million a day deploying the military into our streets and $75 billion on ICE. This isn't just an attack on immigrants. It's an attack on our entire community. What they want us to do is they want us to blame our neighbors. They want us to blame our immigrants, blame our trans siblings. They want to pit us against one another. But we all know that true safety does not come from armed troops that harass our neighbors. It comes from good jobs, strong schools, affordable health care, and communities that trust each other. Our message is clear, and that is, the National Guard does not belong in our cities. We will not be intimidated. Instead, we will be united, fighting for a future rooted in care, dignity, and real safety for all. Many organizations and advocates and those who are, you know, working as city staff here, we have spent many months preparing for this day. We have held Know Your Rights trainings. We have sent out resources to our community. And I hope that we can do another round of that. I hope that we can do another round of Know Your Rights resources sending to our distribution and communications lists, our social media. And I would also ask if our city staff could look into mailing red cards and other information to every single household in South San Francisco to ensure that our residents know what their rights are. Moving forward, I also want to bring to attention our most recent Peninsula Clean Energy meeting. They have presented another round of reach codes for cities across the county to adopt. And these reach codes are, you know, big shout-out to the city of San Mateo as they were the first to adopt it. I believe they are the model, for the model. And they're looking at policies that would affect two-way air conditioning, electric readiness, flex path for both residential as well as commercial buildings. And I hope that we can study that as a city and potentially implement that here as well. In addition to that, I had the opportunity to attend many events over the past few weeks, one of which was the Cal Cities Convention, which I attended along with the mayor and with our assistant city manager. I believe our city attorney was there as well, attending panels related to finance, childcare, and immigration, which is especially important in our current time. And I also want to say congratulations to our mayor, Eddie Flores, for chairing the Cal Cities Peninsula Division over the past year and doing such a good job at it as our Peninsula Division events have been very well-attended. And your advocacy there has ensured that Peninsula-related interests are well-represented for the whole organization of Cal Cities. I also had the opportunity to attend the South San Francisco Chamber Business Awards Night. And I also want to give a big shout-out to the CEO, Mary Prem, who has truly transformed that chamber and has brought together so many new members for the South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce, small businesses and biotech companies alike, and really turned that organization into being very community-oriented. And I think just, you know, seeing that the breadth of the organization's honor that night, including, you know, the South San Francisco Women's Club and many others, just shows that many great things are coming to South San Francisco. Next, I, you know, last Friday, there were four events, and I was running around like a madman. I start off my day at Housing Leadership Day, which they held at the South San Francisco Conference Center, really highlighting the various policies and the strategies we can employ here in San Mateo County to better meet the housing needs of our populations, from young people all the way to seniors, and how we can prevent displacement of our longtime residents. After that, I ran over to Orange Park, where I attended the YMCA Community Resource Center 10th anniversary, as YMCA is the primary organization that provides resources to our communities in need. And it was a great celebration where many members throughout our community, I think a few hundred community members ended up attending. And we celebrated the staff and the volunteers that make the work that the YMCA does possible. After that, I ran all the way back to East 101 area for the Future Lab celebration, celebrating much of the work and the contributions that Genentech has to our students, starting from when they're very young in elementary school all the way to high school and beyond. And then I ran all the way to San Carlos, where our Chamber CEO, Mary Prem, had a Diwali celebration. So I also want to wish, and I got a henna on my hand, which is Indian, kind of like a temporary tattoo. And the saying goes, this is what the artist said, is the saying goes, "The deeper it stains, and the longer it stains, the deeper the love of your spouses for you." And I told the artist that I'm not married yet, and she said, "It's time, and so maybe that's a sign." But seriously, happy Diwali for all those who celebrate. But seriously, happy Diwali for all those who celebrate, and if you have the opportunity, please attend the celebration somewhere in the Bay Area, as they are very beautiful. And what Diwali stands for is the triumph of light over darkness, which is a very beautiful thing, so, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Coleman, and to all my colleagues, I just want to express my gratitude. You know, we are indeed a very active, very busy council. I see many of these events come across my inbox, and I want to thank you all for representing, for doing and putting in your flavor, your presence on them. I try to come on some of these, except I'm doing my own bunch of these as well, and but to highlight not only that we're busy just for the sake of being busy, but because we find these events to be very impactful for the community, for the future of South San Francisco and the current, the present of South San Francisco. And I want to start off by acknowledging and thanking staff, because I have profound admiration for everything that you do, Marie Patea, the city manager's office, everyone for keeping us coordinated, on time, and all these certificates, trust me, it's a factory of certificates of recognitions and proclamations, but we do it with heart, and that's what we do as a council. We lead with purpose, we lead with heart. I want to just highlight some of the events, not to repeat all of them, but I want to mention a few that weren't mentioned. Councilmember Coleman and the South San Francisco Chamber, we also welcomed another new business to South San Francisco. I think this year, we've gotten many new businesses, not just in one district, but all throughout. This one, if you haven't seen it or partaken, it's right across the street, folks. It's Sour Dough and Company, a franchisee, and it's, we welcomed them here to District One, it's soups and sourdough, right, what makes Bay Area and San Francisco known for, sandwiches and salads, so definitely partake in welcoming them. They could have chose any city, in fact, they have another restaurant already in Pacifica, but guess what, they bring it over here to South San Francisco. One exciting opportunity that I had is I attended and met with members, about 15, we have, we're currently at 13, of our youth commission, our youth commissioners, and I want to thank library staff for supporting that. It's great to be able to partake and get ideas, these are our leaders, not our future leaders, these are current leaders. They're very engaged, many of them are even already leading nonprofits that they've helped establish. It's remarkable the talent, the caliber that we have amongst our students here, and there's really exciting things coming, I can't just share yet, but they are really looking forward to engaging further, and not just them, but all over South San Francisco, our youth as well. Presented, as well as the events that I attended with some of my colleagues here, a certificate of recognition to Skyline College Middle High School. This is a dual program with our school district, it's 10th year now, it's graduated, not only do you graduate from high school with your high school diploma, but you also graduate from your associate degree, so think of that. So what ends up happening is, they go into college as freshman years with about 60 units already, so they're able to graduate even, you know, at a faster pace and still, you know, move forward, so it's a savings, it's an impactful program. We started it here in collaboration with other neighboring cities, so we were really honored to be able to celebrate the recognition of the alumni there as well. The Chamber Awards was mentioned, thank you to Mary Prem for everything, but what I really want to call out again, a first, is having the first Filipina to lead the Board of Directors, Danny Fandino, is now leading the great work that the Board of Directors in the Chamber continues to lead on. That's a first for South San Francisco, the Chamber has been here, I think, more than 100 years, it's a staple, and as I called it out that evening, it takes a great leader to not compete with other local chambers, but believe it or not, all the other chambers were there, present, and they had bought a table, and they were engaging, and that's really impactful of the work that President Fandino and also the Chamber CEO is engaged in. More will come on the Future Lab and the impact that has had on our school district and our students, the partnership that we've had with Genentech, and that's coming up soon, I believe at the next council meeting, we'll be able to recognize them. YMCA, as Councilmember Coleman, our core, North County core social services agencies, we partnered with this agency during the pandemic, they provide a great resources, both financial and otherwise. At that time, Vice Mayor and then Mayor Nagales was able to lead our initiative with them as well, and do a lot of other work that we're doing, including rent relief and others, so we were able to celebrate them too. I attended a neighborhood discussion about safe streets and the different considerations happening between District Five and District Three at Martin Elementary, that was a really well-passionate discussion, to say the least, discussing the new improved pedestrian and vehicle speed reduction strategies around Martin Elementary and Hillside. I want to thank our city staff, as well as the school district, and our residents for being engaged, for coming out and sharing their input, and being able to dialogue and not be divisive, but really share their feedback and share their opinion. This was a great demonstration of how we all can learn and provide new ideas to make things work and for the better of our community. As well, earlier this month, like Councilmember Coleman said, with our city staff, and we were able to join elected officials from across San Mateo County at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, in fact, other cities here in San Mateo County, their entire council, yes, all five members, attended and engaged in really in meaningful dialogue, and what this brought about was various opportunities to continue to further engage. What this means is, this is how we advocate, for example, the vehicle license fee that we were able to champion and bring back home and be able to solicit funds, financial funds, this is how we champion also climate resiliency for our east of 101 and Bayside areas, our planning for civic engagement, how we tackle also emerging technologies in local government, these were some of the breakout sessions that I was able to really gain practical tools. It's the opportunity to not have to recreate the wheel, but be able to be efficient in using our resources as well. I do have a request, and I want to direct it to our city manager and her staff, and this is regarding the growing presence of food trucks in our downtown area, particularly in District Five during the early evening hours. Let me be clear before I even start with my comments, I support food access, especially now in this day and age, I think the Board of Supervisors just approved even additional funding for San Mateo County residents that are dependent and receive services from CalFresh, so I am all about addressing food insecurities. But I believe also that no one in our community should go hungry, and that's not the intention, but addressing food insecurity is a moral imperative. But we also have the responsibility as leaders to ensure that all our vendors, mobile or brick and mortar, are operating safely, again, I want to repeat this, safely, legally, and also fairly. Recently, I heard from a local business owner who's been here a long time, she gave me a call in District Five, who has followed every rule in terms of her business, obtained her business license, secured the necessary permit, doing a wonderful job, is a strong clientele, and now finds herself competing with some food trucks that are not playing by some of those rules. Many of these trucks are not based in South San Francisco, or even in San Mateo County, some are not visibly displaying required permits, and this is a concern for myself and also for others, as this presents public health compliance issues and trash management as well. This isn't just about competition, it's really about fairness, it's about safety, so I understand, and if we could continue pursuing this, Madam City Manager, to really do outreach, first of all, try to assess, get a count of who is within our area, again, focusing on District Five, it could be all over the city, and being a proactive outreach, not to penalize, but really to get a sense of becoming more of an informational and educational, so that they are aware and we can extend some grace, and if we don't see improvement, then we can continue to explore other opportunities and possibilities, but I want to make sure that the safety of our residents is important, so if we could follow up on that, please.
Mayor Flores' staff will be going out next week on Wednesday evening, starting at 8:00, visiting the food trucks downtown to start off with, and they have a flyer and more information about the permit requirements that they'll be sharing.
Thank you very much, appreciate that very much. I also want to take a moment to address and correct some of the misinformation that has been circulating about this year's State of the City. Let's start with the facts, this is a public event and is free to attend. No one is being excluded, and no one is being asked to pay to hear from their mayor or their city leadership. The city is hosting a luncheon as part of the event, and those who wish to join the meal are welcome to purchase a lunch. But let's be clear, you do not need to buy lunch to attend. You can come, listen, engage, participate at no cost at all. And this is not new, also, previous mayors have held the State of the City at the Conference Center, at Hotel Focus, and even as a luncheon. In 2022, our former city manager at that point, and Mayor Nagales, gave a version of it at a breakfast for the business community. This year's format continues that tradition, and in fact, we're offering multiple ways for our community to engage, including having a Wednesday night city council version, free to the public, open to attend, and the Thursday version at the Conference Center is designed to welcome our business sector, our education, our healthcare partners, many of whom are also based in District Five and are helping to face, sorry, to shape the future of our city. In fact, if you haven't seen or read the news, we have a Nobel Prize winning, just won the Prize in Medicine this December, right here in District Five in our Life Science Corridor. This is not about hiding anything or not speaking to residents, in fact, it's quite the opposite, we're expanding access, I'm actually doing it two times, to different areas of towns and constituencies of stakeholders. So I look forward to seeing everyone there, whether it's Wednesday night, or Thursday afternoon, or both. Lastly, I want to clearly mention that three, if not more, of members of this council, we are immigrants. I am a proud immigrant. I was born in El Salvador, I didn't arrive to this country until I was a child, I didn't learn English until probably when I was seven or eight years old. Many of the folks I see around in this room are also proud immigrants. That says a lot about South San Francisco. And I will tell you that as mayor, I've gotten text messages, as I've gotten calls, and what we will continue to say and continue to do is, first of all, we're South San Francisco, seven miles south, and next, we're going to continue to say that we are a diverse city, an inclusive city, a powerful city that stands on the fabric of inclusion, and at no way and no means will we ever back to tyranny, will we ever back off to intimidation tactics, or anything else in South San Francisco. Our immigrant community, whatever country that has come from, is really the essence, whether it's the business community, whether it's our teachers, our educators, our coaches, our city staff, our neighbors, will continue to affirm that South San Francisco is strong, and also want to reassure and commit that this city council, as well as our police department and our safety teams, adhere by the rule of law, which has been applied in the state of California, and that means that we are not collaborating with ICE, we are not pushing people to get arrested. Our South San Francisco Police Department are professional, dedicated individuals who know what's at stake and understand our community and have grown up to our community. So I want to make sure that folks know that as we move forward in the next maybe 48, 72 hours, things are going to look different, but rest assured that here in South San Francisco, this council stays committed. This council knows what to move forward on, and we will not back down. Safety is important, of course, our First Amendment, anyone and everyone can use it, but we also want to protect our cities and make sure that our residents, when you need to call our police department or our fire department, aren't fearful to pick up the phone, to dial 911, but understand that the situation at the national level also affects us indirectly and sometimes directly here. So as mayor, I'm committed to continuing that, we will be monitoring heavily what will be transpiring in the next few days, if not weeks, and as my colleagues have shared, we are not going to just sit on our hands. We will be vocal, we will be smart about it, but we will protect first and foremost our community and our residents here in South San Francisco. All right, thank you, I think we've spoken a lot, we're ready to move on to actual city business, so with that, Madam City Clerk, we could go on to the next item.
Thank you, Mayor, our next item is public comments, and we have six individuals signed up to speak, we'll begin with Clifton Birch.
And before we do that, just want to make sure that I put this statement, the city acknowledges that the members of the public have the right to be heard, but the city also wants to emphasize that we have a zero tolerance policy for discriminatory and harassing conduct. The city denounces any hate speech that may be vocalized during public comments, and speakers making public comments are not expressing the views of the city or the city council. Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers of South San Francisco, my name is Clifton Birch, I am a consultant to a general contractor out here in South San Francisco, and we did a project for you guys back in 2020, I believe the project number was S as in Sam, T as in Tom, 1601. It was the Linden Phase One Traffic Street Calming, and we didn't get compensated for that work. So we've been around, we went out of business, we've been trying to reach out to the city, no response, no communication, reached out to the city attorney, Sky Woodruff, disrespectful, unprofessional, and actually treated me like a second-class citizen. So what I'm asking for the council and the Mr. Mayor, you could do, is audit that project for me, and then we can look at how we financed that city project off our backs. So we have several over 20, over 20 PCOS or change orders that haven't been compensated for, 10 of them in which the city of South San Francisco requested and work performed and completed, we just haven't gotten compensated, we wasn't treated fairly, and we just want someone to help us out, because we've been trying to reach out to everyone in the city, and we had no city administrator when we called, the attorneys were moving from Oakland to Redwood City, and from Redwood City to somewhere else, it wasn't, the project manager was brand-new, didn't know really too much about construction, it was a, it was a mess. So all I'm here is to say, if somebody can look into the project, audit the job, and see if we can get compensated for the work performed and completed.
Thank you for your comment. And we'll make sure to, thank you, next comment.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annie.
Counsel, I just want to, I would be happy to provide a little more information now if you're interested, I can also send a follow-up email with a summary of what transpired around this project, your pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, let's follow up afterwards, thank you very much for wanting to.
Next speaker is Annie.
Good evening, oops, good evening. So during the June 25th, July 9th, August 13, and August 27 city council meetings, I raised concerns on the process, data, and selection of the Women of the Year awardees this year. And during the June 25th meeting, Mr. Flores called it a disgrace for me to even bring this up, and today, after having waited almost four months, we finally received our public records request that proved that the entire event, from soliciting the public to nominate a fellow South San Francisco woman to the selection of the awardees, were nothing but a total fake facade of democracy and a deceptive political coordination between the city manager's office and Mr. Flores, to put women in the inner circle to the limelight. So Mr. Flores, it is truly a disgrace, a conspiracy, and a proof of nepotism and totalitarian at the highest level. Here are what I actually learned from all of these email exchanges. So on June, on April 7th, and there was an exchange of email between Mr. Flores and Communications Manager, Ms. Lau. So Mr. Flores asked Ms. Lau, if there were four winners and one honorable mention, then who were the four winners, referring to last year, 2024's Women of the Year recipients? Ms. Lau responded, just four, no honorable mention, Amanda, Anthony, Ava Romero, Dana LeJune, and Lydia Pomposo. The number grew because Dana and Amanda nominated one another, and it felt fair to recognize them together. Lydia and Ava had multiple nominations each. So what this demonstrated was that Mr. Coleman, who was in charge of that last year, clearly it went from one Women of the Year to four Women of the Year, and I actually looked up, you know, the two people who nominated each other and you put them on, they were both on your website as endorsing you, they served as, I think, the school board. So congratulations, I think this was really well-done for helping you win the election last year. So another change between Mr. Flores and Ms. Lau was, Mr. Flores actually directed Ms. Lau, I will be making the final selections, but we will not share that out, we would just say nomination will be reviewed and considered. Nomination period, this week through the end of the month, which is April. Review final selection and notification, first week of May.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Pericetti.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Pericetti, and I reside on Royal Drive, I lived in South San Francisco since 1964. I'm here to discuss the issue of unleashed dogs at Bury-Bury Park and the importance of adhering to the leash regulations to ensure safety and enjoyable environment for all. Recently, my family experienced three incidents involving unleashed dogs regarding police reports in a matter of two weeks. Several incidents recently involved violence, I will give you three examples, my husband had an issue with a man with the unleashed pit bull, and he got a gun pulled on him. The second issue, my husband had a dog, our dog on leash, and a pit bull viciously attacked our dog, and we had a large vet bill. Luckily, our dog didn't die. Third incident, a man had a dog off a leash, another pit bull, and got into an argument with another gentleman and had a knife pulled to his neck, all because his dogs were off a leash. When and how does this end, and how? And if there are no consequences for the people who let the dogs roam freely, the police need to at least issue citations to individuals who think that rules don't apply to them. Given the current global climate, prioritizing the safety of South San Francisco residents is crucial. When police respond to safety concerns, they typically issue warnings, which are often disregarded by park visitors. I propose that new large signs be posted at Bury-Bury Park, accompanied by a thousand-dollar fine for noncompliance. The park is utilized by children, elderly individuals, and others, and failure to follow rules has led to continuous confrontation amongst park visitors. This measure will encourage accountability and responsibility amongst park visitors. By working together, we can create a safe environment and more harmonious community space. I urge you to consider installing larger and more prominent signs and imposing the fine, empowering us to drive positive change and ensure a better future for our community. I was at the park today, called the police department. There was a large pit bull running around the back of the playground where at least ten children were playing. Since I left, no police showed up. I understand it's not the first priority of the police, but someone is going to get hurt. So I am here to put you on notice, and I will be calling the police every time there's an unleashed dog at Bury-Bury Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Pericetti. Can you provide your contact information to the city manager if they don't already have it, just so we could follow up with you as well?
I will, thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Carney.
Good evening, city council. I would like to show you some of District Five downtown. I'm a thirty-year-plus resident of the downtown. Sam, if you can hold up that picture, two years I've been calling this in, and as you see here, there's a, so as you see here, a big building was built, several city officials day in, day out go by that. These businesses, there's five restaurants there. You see the blight, you see the trash. I went through all the chain of command, nothing, nothing, nothing. The second one is, James, the proclamation you just read for ADA disabled people. Sorry to hear about your dad. I've written to City Hall, I've written to council. Here we go. Here you have a ramp that's been replaced three times. Counsel, you called me out, you said it wasn't true. I provided you the pictures, the dates, and the times. We have pictures here, fifteen years, the city manager, former city manager come out, he had the money, fully funded, to replace the busted sidewalks. And as you see here, you get in a wheelchair, you go out into the middle of the street, and then you can't get up the curb. I've sent you this, and I've been working with you guys for five years. City Hall wrote back to me and told me in writing, not our problem, take your problems somewhere else. Well, I'm here tonight, so now hopefully we can get something done. The trash in District Five is deplorable. Now, you guys told me a couple of weeks ago that the bins on Grand Avenue are not yours. That's a lie, it's untrue. There is one San Trans bin. Yes, it's a mess, but you have about twenty bins that's a bigger mess. And why won't you do something about it? Every second door on Grand Avenue is closed. They pay a business license, they get health inspections, they pay rent, and they make landlords rich, and they struggle to survive. So why won't you acknowledge that we have a problem? And back at the back of the rear of the Job Center, there's a few homeless sleeping, and they're struggling in sleeping bags at night. Could the Job Center bring them inside and help them? We're funding that with our tax dollars. Sidewalks, there is no sidewalks. I bring it to you, and you ridicule me. Why? We have almost half our population is over, is seniors. You know, if you spent a day on crutches or in a wheelchair, maybe you'd take this serious. Why won't you take it serious? Why do you ridicule people that come before you to speak publicly about our infrastructure failing and our blighted downtown?
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Madam City Manager, when is council going to be briefed on the parcel business improvement districts initiatives? Is that any time that we will be looking at that?
Are you talking about the P-Bid?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, we're happy to bring you an update on that.
Okay, maybe we can bring an update on that as that's a direct action item that will be improving and addressing all of this stuff. Great, thank you. Next item, please.
Next speaker is Barbara Erhard.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and guests. The State of the City Address that highlights the past accomplishments and future direction of South San Francisco for its residents has become a business and political donors-only club. We are right now in this one hundred and seventy million to two hundred and ten million-dollar community building with a debt service. That's interest-only of six-point-six million dollars annually. Albeit the MSB, a safe building until former city manager Mike Fraterell started saying it might be seismic, seismically unsafe, should continue to be used especially for the State of the City Address using the social hall. It was illegally stolen from the residents when the city did not do its due diligence in mitigating the senior services center in the MSB. However, what does the business community care about our city? This is what the Chamber of Commerce annual luncheon is for, for the business community. The residents are treated again as stepchildren, but do care about the State of the City Address, and unless they each pay sixty dollars for a meal, they're sitting on the sidelines while our elected politicians glad-hand for future donations for a future Assembly run whose campaign is still active or upcoming reelections to their council seats. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sam Chakuti.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Flores, members of South San Francisco City Council, and fellow citizens. My name is Sam Chakuti. I attempted to attend the special meeting on October fourth of this month, which dealt with the selection of the new city manager. Meeting was held at three fifty-seven Oyster Point Boulevard at one P.M. I drove down Oyster Point until dead-ended, then turned left onto Oyster Point Boulevard and drove to eight-nine, Oyster Point. At this point, I realized I had gone too far and made a U-turn and headed back to Oyster Point Boulevard. There were signs in front of buildings giving various addresses, but not one showed the address of three-five-seven. I then turned right back onto, turned right, back onto Oyster Point Boulevard. At this point, I turned into a parking lot of a company at three-four-nine Oyster Point Boulevard. Here I parked and spoke to a security guard at the premises. I told her I was looking for three-five-seven Oyster Point Boulevard to attend a city council meeting. She said she did not know where three-five-seven Oyster Point Boulevard was, but would drive around and see if she could find it for me. While she was searching for me, I walked up to three-five-five Oyster Point Boulevard, which is a parking garage. The building to its right, on the bay, is three-six-five Oyster Point. I figured three-five-seven Oyster Point must be close by, so I walked in between the garage and three-six-five Oyster Point Boulevard. Alas, there was a solid fence blocking my way, and all I could do was get to the alley between the garage and three-six-five Oyster Point Boulevard no further. At this point, the security guard returned and told me that she could not find three-five-seven Oyster Point Boulevard, nor could she see any signage that said there was a city council meeting in the area. I ultimately left frustrated and headed for home. There had, there had to be a more convenient location for the public to attend this meeting than at the furthest reaches of South San Francisco. Thank you.
Madam City Manager, can you provide some context to that, please?
We did double-check, and the H.R. Director placed signs at the entrance and at the back door, and many people found the meeting. So I'm very sorry if any members of the public got turned around there, but I think the city did meet all the requirements for addressing and noticing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Many people found the meeting. There was no one from the public there, and maybe it was just me, as far as electeds, I had a little trouble finding the meeting and getting into the building. So I don't think we can just carte blanche, push away the concern. It was not the best place to have a meeting.
Next, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to add to the city manager's comment, and without, this is not intended to respond directly to Vice Mayor Adiego, but I just wanted to point out that, that I did review the situation. It did meet the requirements of the Brown Act, and the H.R. Director did attempt to provide additional signage to direct people to the correct location. It is unfortunate that a member of the public was unable to find it, but I just wanted to clarify that it did meet the legal requirements for the Brown Act.
We'll move on to our next speaker, who's Fianola.
Good evening, council. It sends chills down my spine. Meeting after meeting, listening to false virtue, which is indeed in no shortage from this dais. You stand with our immigrant community? No. You stand with illegal aliens who've violated the laws of the United States of America. You stand with an invasion rolled out by the Biden administration on legal immigrants and American citizens to count ballots. Some immigrants in this community are not afraid. We're American citizens. We came here legally. We followed the laws. We followed every rule. We hold the laws of the United States of America in the highest regard, and that is why we, legal immigrants and American citizens, are not afraid. In fact, we're empowered, empowered to look more closely at how you deceptively conflate one subcategory of illegal aliens with another of legal immigrants, and how you fund public resources to aid and abet an invasion of our country, otherwise known in the Constitution as treason. The United States Constitution, Trump's California law, laws repugnant to the Constitution are null and void. Thank you.
That concludes our speakers.
Next item, please.
We'll move along to our consent calendar. Item number five is a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings of September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and October fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Item number six is a motion to approve the reappointment of one Measure W Citizens Oversight Committee member. Item number seven is a report regarding a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a third amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with Ensemble Investments LLC for the disposition of the city-owned property located at three-six-seven Marina Boulevard for a hotel development. Item number seven A is the resolution. Item number eight is a report regarding a resolution approving program supplemental agreement number F zero-two-eight revision two in the amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and five dollars with the State of California for the bridge preventative maintenance program and authorizing the approval of budget amendment number twenty-six-point-zero-two-zero. Item number eight A is the resolution. Item number nine is a report regarding a resolution authorizing an agreement with Trimble Unity Construct for capital project management software and support services and approving budget amendment number twenty-six-point-zero-three-one. Item number nine A is the resolution. Item number ten is a report regarding a resolution amending Resolution one-zero-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-five to allow city manager to utilize any unspent amount of the total project budget if necessary towards additional construction contingency budget for the Corporation Yard Roofing Project. Item number ten A is the resolution. Item number eleven is a report regarding a resolution to amend Resolution one-three-four-dash-twenty-twenty-five, authorizing a total project budget of nine hundred thousand dollars for the Dundee Park remodel. Item number eleven A is the resolution. Item number twelve is a report regarding a resolution authorizing the acceptance of grant funding of up to five thousand dollars from the Peninsula Library System via County of San Mateo Measure K funds to encourage community building in which library programs will bring people together in trusted environments where participants can explore and learn together, finding common ground and connection at the South San Francisco Public Library, amending the library department's fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-six operating budget, and approving budget amendment number twenty-six-point-zero-two-seven. Item number twelve A is the resolution. Item number thirteen is a report regarding a resolution to accept United States Department of Transportation Grant and updating TR-two-five-zero-one Vision Zero Action Plan, budget amendment number twenty-six-point-zero-two-nine. Item number thirteen A is the resolution. Item number fourteen is a report regarding a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchasing agreement on behalf of the city of South San Francisco with Diamondback Fire and Rescue, Inc., in the amount of eighty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars with thirteen cents, to purchase two complete sets of vehicle extrication equipment, approved budget number amendment number twenty-six-point-zero-two-eight to the fire department operating budget in an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand, two hundred and four dollars with thirteen cents, authorize the appropriation of nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars with ninety-six cents of available fund balance from the Fire Public Safety Impact Fee Fund, and authorize the appropriation of twenty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars with seventeen cents of designated fund balance and developer impact fees from the Genesis North Tower Development. Item number fourteen A is the resolution. Item number fifteen is a report regarding a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations from various community partners totaling one hundred and seventy-nine thousand for fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-six, as well as in-kind donations for the Park and Recreation Department Concert in the Park Event. Item number fifteen A is the resolution. Item number sixteen is a report regarding a resolution authorizing the acceptance of three hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars in grant funding from the California Department of Housing and Community Development through the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Program and approving budget amendment number twenty-six-point-zero-three-zero. Item number sixteen A is the resolution. Item number seventeen is a report regarding a resolution approving the acceptance of older American Act grant funds from the San Mateo County Aging and Adult Services Division in the amount of one hundred thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars, and amending the Parks and Recreation Department fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-six operating budget pursuant to budget amendment number twenty-six-point-zero-two-six. Item number seventeen A is the resolution. Item number eighteen is a report regarding a second reading and adoption of an ordinance adopting amendments to Title Twenty of the South San Francisco Municipal Code to make minor revisions to section twenty-point-one-one-zero related to a height exception for screening for roof-mounted equipment. Item number eighteen A is the ordinance. Item number nineteen is a report Item number 19 is a report regarding an ordinance repealing current building code regulations under Title 15 of the South San Francisco Municipal Code and adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Standards Code with certain local amendments, second reading. Item number 19 A is the ordinance. Item number 20 is a report regarding a second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending the South San Francisco zoning map to rezone the properties at 139 Terminal Court, 120 Terminal Court, 196 Produce Avenue, 160 Produce Avenue, 140 Produce Avenue, from mixed industrial high to business technology park high, and an ordinance adopting a development agreement to construct a life science campus totaling 1,700,000 square feet on a 17.67 acre site at 131 Terminal Court in accordance with Title 19 and 20 of the South San Francisco Municipal Code. Items 20A and 20B are the ordinances.
Great job, Jasmine.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any items that folks wish to pull?
Item number nine and 10.
Nine and 10. All right, I am going to pull a few. So if you're out there in the audience, I'm going to pull 12, 13, 15, 16, 17. I promise it's going to be very brief. We'll start with nine. Item number nine.
And I'll keep it brief. I don't know that I have any questions that need to be answered, Mr. Wilson. I just have an observation. So this is a contract for support services for capital project management software. Current contract that ran from sometime in '22 until November of this year is, gives us little time to really consider any other options. So I'm bothered by the reference to why this is a sole source justification. It may hold water, but at the same time, there's no opportunity to have any meaningful discussion on it because one contract is up and it's time for another. I guess one question I do have, this contract will be for five years. The last one was for three, is that correct?
Yes.
Why is that?
Why five instead of three? So let me tell you just a brief bit about the history. In 2017, I believe, we initially had a five-year contract, and then we did a three-year extension. And there was a right to renew this. But rather than just continue renewing it, we wanted to include the new contract language for cybersecurity. And so we thought we'd start over with a new contract. And I apologize that you didn't have enough. We didn't give you more time to review this. It was an oversight on my part. It was included in our operating budget and the IT budget.
I'm not trying to peg the responsibility on anyone. You, I mean, I do know your name, but you've been here for a relatively short amount of time. So we're not looking for any apologies. I just want to go on the record. I will not be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number 10.
So item number 10 has to do with the budget, the total project budget for the Corporation Yard. Yes, Mr. Goldcrest.
Correct.
So I have no problem with the amount of money because on a $2 million project, a hundred and some odd thousand for rot repair is a small percentage. But having done this with other buildings, if you wait too long, you end up with dry rot underneath the existing. Did we wait too long?
I wouldn't say that the dry rot is extensive. So I wouldn't say that we waited too long, but it's certainly at the end of its useful life.
Well, I mean, I know we're never wrong, and that's kind of the mantra that we put out there over and over again. But I need to understand, and probably not from you, Jake, but I need to understand maybe from Public Works, do we do any inspection along the way when we get close to the time to replace a roof? How old is this roof that we're replacing?
This roof is 25 years old, I believe.
Sounds like we waited too long.
And it's actually less of a question of Public Works. It's a facility condition assessment. And I think Parks and Rec Director Greg Mediate using.
No, I don't mean to belabor it because there's other items. My point is 25 years is a long time. We may have waited too long. And I need to know that there's another process. Not tonight.
Got it.
Not tonight. Talk to me anytime. I'm retired. Give me a call.
All right, so the way we're going to do, kind of if you want to line up, it's going to be quick and brief. So Adam, John, Aaron, Elia, and Angela, I want you to share how much it is that we are receiving and what it is for. I'd like the community and the public to know this is important, to be able to recognize the partners and what we're being, using this funds for. Please.
Great, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Adam L. Schultz, Assistant Library Director. We are pleased to share that we have been awarded up to $5,000 from the Peninsula Library System through San Mateo County and Supervisor Jackie Spear to do programming across the county in libraries to bring people together in perhaps non-traditional ways. So we're looking at a range of activities, guest speakers, of course, but also tabletop gaming, social hours, things like that to bring the community together in the library and get to know each other.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Johnny? Item 13.
Good evening, honorable members of council. Johnny Wilson, Public Works Engineering. We received $400,000 from the U.S. Department of Transportation's Safe Streets and Roads for All program to develop our Vision Zero Action Plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15. Aaron?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Parks and Recreation received $2,000 from Alan Nugent from State Farm Agent, $2,000 from Kaiser Permanente. Both of those were for the concert in our annual concert in Park to help enhance that event, as well as $25,000 from Genentech for the concert in the park. And that really went towards our family fun zone area, enhancing that area. And then we had our Parking Company of America that was an in-kind service with helping with the free shuttling for the event for that day. In addition, we had, we have $150,000 donation that is before you for Stripe that would help to electrify the handheld tools for our parks maintenance and the charging elements, infrastructure, to get that started for our Parks Department.
And I'd love to unpack a little bit and also be able to recognize in the audience the team from Stripe who has been able to do this, both Tony and, and, sorry, your name. Yes, Erica, of course, to be able to recognize. But tell us a little bit more of what this actually is going to be helping our Parks and Rec Department on.
Certainly. So I'll step in. Greg Mediate, Director of Parks and Rec. So in 2024, Newsom signed into law a bill that would require that small engine equipment be electrified. So starting in 2025, small engine equipment, things that we use every day in terms of our regular work performance, also emergency response, things like small generators, chainsaws, weed whips or string trimmers, hedgers, et cetera, are no longer sold in California as gas equipment. So we started to electrify our equipment. We found that one of the major roadblocks was the charging infrastructure. It's the size of the panel we have at the Corporation Yard, the amount of space we need to charge each day, probably more than 100 battery packs for all these units. And so we were very fortunate to be connected. I believe it was you, Mr. Mayor, that connected us with Stripe, who was interested in helping us move forward our sustainability efforts. So of course, in addition to law, it is what we want to do is the right thing, to electrify our small engine equipment along with our fleet. But this will give us approximately $100,000 will go towards the infrastructure needed to add the charging equipment. So enhancing our PG&E panel, bringing electricity to our charging bays, installing the charging bays, and then approximately $50,000 will go towards the actual equipment that our staff will use in the field.
Great, thank you very much for that update. I do want to recognize Stripe. Mr. City Manager, all of the donation is legal. There's no issues with that, is that correct? Mister, sorry, Mister City Attorney. The donation from Stripe, it's all legal. There's no issues with it whatsoever.
I'm sorry, we reviewed this as part of the agenda review, and there are no issues with the donation.
Great, thank you. And I just want to thank Stripe for, most importantly, not only supporting our staff and our Parks and Rec, but also for taking care of our environment. This is what really that is, and helping our climate here and the issues that we all real, are real as residents. So thank you, and I want to recognize that as well.
Yes. Big shout out to Stripe. You know, from the CEO all the way down to many employees. There are many employees who live in South City. Many of them are friends, and many of them are bikers. And they're always emailing me, texting me, thinking, how can we make bike infrastructure really safe? And so you got something going on at Stripe where you have really involved employees who are advocates for the entire community. So thank you for choosing South San Francisco, and thank you for the contribution.
Thank you again. Great, moving on. Elia, and then we'll have Angela really quickly on these. Just want to.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Elia Moreno, Management Analyst in the Housing Division. So the $372,849 is grant funding from our permanent local housing allocation. Specifically, this is only our year three allocation. It's a total of five years. The city's total allocation would be $1,307,880. Our year three allocation will be going specifically towards economic advancement, center operating costs, minor home repair program, and reimbursement for preservation activities for our below-market rate program.
Thank you. Angela, round this off. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers. The City of South San Francisco has been the fortunate recipient for many years of receiving older American Act grant funds to support our senior services program, namely for the grant at hand. This funds our adult daycare program as well as transportation services. It allows us to offer free or reduced-cost care. So for community members who might consider cost as a barrier for adult daycare or transportation, please don't hesitate to contact us. And then also our Congregate Nutrition Program, which has been in place since 2023, where up to 90 seniors twice a week can participate in a free lunch program. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for staff for stepping up and being able to do all this. I wanted to just highlight for the community, many times this gets buried in our consent agenda, in our council packets. And I just wanted to really acknowledge your staff time as well because some of these came through grants or connections or actually relationships, but also the generous donation, again, from our partners. This absolutely needs to be called and deserves to be called out. So once again, I want to thank you. And this is great. This is, again, moving our city forward and impacting programs that improve the quality of life for our residents. Having said that, I will now take a motion of all items except item number nine of the consent agenda.
I would move approval of the consent calendar, five through 20, with the exception of nine.
I will second.
I have a first and a second. Can I please have roll call?
Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Councilmember Nagales?
Yes.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now can I move forward with a motion for item number nine? Can I have a first and a second, please?
So moved.
I have a first. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nagales?
I'm not looking for any support.
Yes, I know.
This is a sole source justification.
I don't want to jeopardize it.
It's like we are pregnant. We don't have a choice.
There you go. I like that.
This is like, yeah, because we've been using it.
Again?
So we're pregnant, we're getting married over here. Okay, got it. Councilmember Nagales?
Aye.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adiego?
No.
Mayor Flores?
Yes. Motion passes, and motion passes on the other items as well. Next agenda item, please.
We'll move along to administrative business. Item number 21 is a report regarding a resolution adopting the City of South San Francisco Age Friendly Action Plan.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Armanino.
Good evening, Mayor Eddy, Vice Mayor Adiego, Councilmembers. As you know, in August of 2022, the City of South San Francisco began its journey in applying for the Age Friendly Community Certification under AARP and the World Health Organization. In May of 2023, the City of South San Francisco was formally recognized as an age-friendly city. In May of 2024, the city, along with collaboration with CAFE, started preparations for developing our Age Friendly Action Plan. I'd like to thank our task force members who are in the audience and on our dais for all the work that you've put in and the time and dedication for this project. But we did not do this alone. The city was fortunate to receive the support and expertise of representatives from CAFE, who provided technical assistance, consultation, applied research access, and community organizing guidance in helping city staff with developing our Age Friendly Action Plan. I'd like to introduce Karen Cunningham from CAFE, who will walk you through the process and how we got to the living document that's before you today.
Thank you, Laura. And. That's former mayor. Former mayor of Brisbane.
I was looking at.
Ms. Cunningham, welcome.
He stole my thunder.
It's kind of dark over there. I didn't even realize it was Karen.
Hi, Flor. How are you? Yes, Karen Cunningham, former mayor of Brisbane. And just before we start, I just want to let you know that when Brisbane was approached to become age-friendly certified, I was the person on the council who was just like, yes, this is such a great idea. And the Board of Supervisors really wanted to have all 20 cities in San Mateo County certified. I am very proud to stand here today and say that 17 of the 20 cities are now age-friendly certified through CAFE, World Health Organization, and everybody else. So Mayor Flores, City Council, staff, and I guess there's probably your task force sitting here as well as you. Thank you. And I just have to say, for Brisbane, it has been fabulous. Our senior population, obviously, we're a smaller city, so it's easier to wrangle people and just go yank them out of their house if they don't want to come to a meeting and make it all happen. It's a bit easier. But our senior people who were on that task force and the people who were part of helping get Brisbane certified are really so much more involved now than before. And if I can impart that to you, and if there's anything I can do to personally help you with that, it's been remarkable how much we've now engaged the senior population who are involved. So without further ado, how do I use this thing? Okay, all right, so thanks, everybody. And I'm really glad to be standing here today. And normally, I don't do the presentation. So when the World Health Organization first noticed the exponential growth in the population of older adults in 2010, they started a worldwide study to learn about the unmet needs of older adults. So now this network includes 1,705 towns and cities across the world and 60 countries encompassing over 330 million people worldwide. encompassing over 330 million people worldwide. So the reach has been quite, quite big. It serves as a platform for cities to share best practices, learn from each other. I hope we can all help each other moving forward and stay together strong, San Mateo County, um, and collaborate on innovative solutions to the challenges of, of an aging population. Now, for everybody in this audience who's probably under 40, I have to say 40 gets there quick, 50 gets there quicker, and before you know it, 60 is on the table. So, you know, getting people prepared for older adult life is so important for all of us to be doing. Um, oh, I forgot something here. Okay, there we go. Um, I just skipped over my own slides because I'm not used to doing this. Um, there are eight domains of livability in, um, age friendly cities. You can all read, I'm not going to go through them. Um, we added a ninth domain because a few cities had requested emergency services, Brisbane being one of them, South City also being another. So you actually have nine domains of livability for your city, um, uh, which is emergency services and everything that goes along with that in our, our community. Um, the age friendly action plan is a document that encompasses your city's five-year information gathering assessment process. Think of this as a roadmap, not something you have to stick to. It's going to change, it's going to duck, it's going to weave, it's going to change and go one direction to another depending on what information is brought to you. Um, next slide. Um, the citywide survey was disseminated to gather input of the unmet needs of the older adults and had copies of, uh, that survey would distributed or made available to everybody in your community. And this is where we are today as a result of that. Now I have to say to everybody who filled in that survey, that was monumental. That was the longest survey in history that was ever put out to anyone and congratulations to everybody who filled it in. I have to tell you, I was one of the people who filled it in as well. So, um, South San Francisco initially had 15 focus groups in '22 and CAFE conducted two additional engagement meetings in October of '24. Um, and that was to discuss what might have been left out in the initial, uh, assessments. Um, okay. To become age friendly certified, South San Francisco focused on the following: expanding free shuttle routes, rest areas, uh, San Francisco Rotary Club collaborated with the city, uh, South San Francisco Police Department did an amazing job as well. And the Center for Age Friendly Excellence developed an older adult community resources display at the senior center and on and on it goes. So I was told I only had a few minutes and I don't want you to give me a red buzz or so.
You're good. You're good.
Okay. So, um, right. Um, focus groups discussions focused on all of the eight domains in addition to, um, the emergency services. Interviews with staff were conducted with various departments in February of 2025 to make sure we had all our ducks in a row and that we had everything, um, covered. Uh, staff in South San Francisco were very thorough and I really quite liked that. Okay. So, um, onwards. And our domains, uh, the outdoor domains that were really important to you, um, some of the strategies included, um, developing a senior ad hoc subcommittee to research and discuss more comfortable seating, which seating seems to be something that is in every city. Everybody wants more benches, so let's have more benches, everybody. Providing age friendly furniture and designing intergenerational, um, playgrounds. The second, uh, domain was transportation, the bugaboo of everybody, right? Everybody complains about transportation. We need to improve it. How we do that in this county is, is quite a challenge, but everybody's really working on that. So we wanted to educate older adults on various transportation resources. And I think when the resources are given out, um, and really pushed, and as much as we do make those things available, um, Got Wheels program is still unknown by a lot of people, et cetera. So the research, the possibilities of additional parking options and the potential of senior safety zones or age friendly parking spaces. The third domain was housing, again, something that is a huge challenge for all of us trying to keep people in their homes and finding ways to gather information about future housing policies is always going to be a challenge. Social participation provides an opportunity that supports social interaction and promotes respect for all ages, abilities and cultures. Uh, some of the strategies including enhancing and increasing social opportunities for older adults, this could be achieved by offering more age friendly social events at various times during the day and evening. And, um, one of the things I've heard around the entire county is trying to have some countywide social interactions, um, that whole loneliness to light that came from the county, anything that we can do to make, um, opportunities for people to get out and get together and have some fun. Um, the communication and information is to ensure the access to information about resources and activities for older adults is available at centralized locations, widely distributed and in multiple languages. And I will add one more thing over and over again. When you ask, you know, how many times should I do it? Do it some more because we're all so busy, as you well know, in our daily business when we're trying to pay attention. Um, but it just, these things get, um, slipped up all the time. And you talked about avoiding scams today. I think if we can have more scammer type of information, probably at a county level that we're all involved with, every scammer, um, uh, thing that I've been to has been filled to the brim.
Yep.
People waiting out the door. So we obviously need much more of that. And I think if we all work together, it might be a better idea than having them on our own. Um, uh, increase outreach to the senior community in areas where they gather. This can be accomplished by providing a centralized location where older adults can access brochures, activity guides and other helpful resources possible. Locations include electronic billboards, civic buildings, coffee venues, parks, restaurants, et cetera. I'm trying to speed read here. Respect and social inclusion. Um, the kindness campaign has really touched a lot of people throughout the county and I think a lot of the older people don't feel like their input is welcome or their input is even relevant. And I think the more we can have social interaction with them, that, that's where all the brains are, is in some of these older people who are now retired and actually have the time to do things that they didn't have before. So we're not using that wonderful resource and we could do that a lot better, in my humble opinion. Um, civic participation and employment. Um, that, that comes up a lot and I think South City probably does a really great job at it, but it was just a reminder to say, we can still do better in all of these areas. And the, the eighth domain was community support and health services. Heard a wonderful presentation earlier from NIMs, so you are already on that. Uh, and the goal there was to provide an environment with programs and resources that support aging in the community with a positive quality of life. And I too, an immigrant, by the way, I meant to say that upfront, so. Um, and slide nine, um, the emergency services. This was not part of AARP or even the World Health Organization when they brought this up, but it's come up over and over again. So I think San Mateo County is the one who's going to be pushing that as something that's very important for our older population to really understand, um, how to be prepared better. And you have appendices, many of them, there's tons of information, we're not going into that. And the process has, you know, started in '22 and in May 2024, CAFE and Parks and Rec staff met to start the process in developing the action plan and here we are. Thank you very much. And as your neighbor, I'm happy to help if you need me for anything. Any questions?
Thank you, Karen, for the presentation. I want to first start off by recognizing the members of the task force that are in the audience. If you could just stand up and take a little recognition there, both of you, I believe. Um, so thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the work and everything that you've done to make sure that the voices of our seniors, and I know there's other members that weren't able to make it tonight, um, but it was a diverse group, um, including many areas of, of our city, geographically as well as demographically as well. Thank you both, uh, for being here to be able to support. Then I want to be able to recognize and acknowledge where all this really was created and that's, uh, my colleague here to the left, Councilmember Nicholas. Essentially, I mean, it's funny you said pregnant earlier because it is your baby. This, I, I see it. I was very, um, honored and privileged to be able to serve in this, uh, task force, but, but you really led the charge here, um, since, uh, the inception when you were mayor as well. So want to recognize you and I also want to recognize staff, Laura, Angela, Greg, everyone who, Devin as well, who have, uh, been going through the spreadsheets and the iterations and the drafts and convening and making sure that the surveys, the focus groups, all of those details were put together. Um, so I'll turn it over to, uh, Councilmember Nicholas to, to share a few comments and, um, and then open it up to the rest of my colleagues if they have questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I would like to acknowledge the assistance of other members who were of the task force who are not here, Edward Toly, Maria Barcelatalong, Betty Battalia, and of course, the two P, two persons who are here today, Lydia Pomposo and Sunny Koya. And of course, the staff, like you said, uh, had been very instrumental in putting this together. Definitely I'll be there for the Brisbane Age Friendly Summit. I was going to put a plug in for that. And if anybody wants to go sign up tonight because we're almost full. Yes, I, I few, few slots left, so I'll definitely be there. Thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to just making sure that we implement this, uh, action plan that we have, uh, making sure that all of the seniors are aging in place and, uh, this is one of those vulnerable, uh, population of our city. And so they really need a lot of our assistance and help. And also they are in turn helping us because of their experience and, uh, the beautiful things that they can, um, implement or, or share with our intergenerational residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicholas. Anyone else comments or questions? Councilmember Nagales?
Uh, first of all, Karen, thank you for the wonderful presentation. Thank you to my colleagues for, for putting this together and also to the committee members. Yeah, I'm glad you brought up transportation because, you know, once a person doesn't drive anymore, um, that can lead to loneliness, first of all, some people because of a lack of interaction. So I'm really glad that you put that as one of the focus. And one of the things that we do here in South City, we provide a free shuttle, which is fantastic. But one of the things I've always wanted to look at was also microtransit. Because sometimes, um, you know, the shuttle doesn't get you where you need to go. And you taking an Uber or Lyft can be really, really expensive. And, um, I don't know if there was ever a discussion.
There is a Got Wheels program?
Yes, actually, I was going to get to that, to that point is that our Got Wheels program, I was reminded that it's oversubscribed now. I think that's correct, right?
There are still a few spots.
Oh, it's good spots, okay. And that's only what, $5?
Mm-hmm.
If you get onto the program, which is phenomenal. I remember when they first came, um, they were looking for people to subscribe to, but now it's oversubscribed. So I wasn't even know if there, if there was any conversations about microtransits, uh, conversations going on amongst the committee or suggestions.
There, there is a lot of conversations going on, I think, in all the cities. Uh, we do have the transportation people coming to our events, so we can pick their brain. Personally, I think we should be asking the county for more money for this program since it is so popular. And the north-south transportation, I'm sure the same in South City is great. East-west, not so great throughout the county. So if we can put pressure on our Board of Supervisors to give us some more money for these programs, I think that is the way to go. Um, as the age friendly workshop in Brisbane will be the last one of 2025, I think it's a really good opportunity for everybody to chat with each other and put their heads together and find out, you know, how we can work on that. That is one of the biggest things that comes up all the time.
Yeah.
How do I get down off the hill?
Yeah. You should also look at the San Mateo County Transportation Authority.
Good timing.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, thank you so much, uh, for this and especially a big thank you to Councilmember Flor Nicholas. When you look at the demographics of South San Francisco, uh, the, the oldest district in terms of demographics is, is District Four and it's definitely, uh, very important, uh, issue. And, you know, I remember knocking doors last year, like a lot of folks are, um, like they're concerned about transportation because when you look at District Four, there's not a lot of buses, there's not a lot of public transit options. And actually I was able to, you know, back when Got Wheels was looking for more clients or not, or, I don't know, maybe clients, right? Or, or constituents to, to utilize their service. In North County, I remember, um, you know, giving them those flyers and letting them know that, that this service, that this service exists and, and, um, I mean, it's important, you know, to, to go out, to, to avoid loneliness and to also just be a, a part of, of the fabric of the South City community, um, at, at all ages of life. And, you know, I've had the opportunity to, um, you meet with many leaders around the county. And you may remember that a report came out, I think, earlier this, this year, that showed that the fastest growing homeless population is unhoused seniors.
Yes.
And, and that issue goes hand in hand with transportation because, I mean, even if you are living in a home and you have, you, you may not be able to, to move elsewhere.
Correct.
And what if you're stuck in that home that doesn't have access to transportation? And I think we're so lucky in South San Francisco where we have a, a very, probably the best Rotary Club in the whole world, um, that is really taking a, a very hands-on, direct role in producing the affordable senior homes that we need here, um, in South San Francisco. I remember, you know, visiting Rotary, uh, Rotary Plaza in the leadway and, and meeting with Beverly Karnatz, who is the community services coordinator of, of, um, of Rotary Plaza and, and her saying that housing is healthcare. Housing is everything. Um, and when you have stable housing, you can do so much more. And if we build housing near transit, we can ensure that, that the communities that we are building are, are walkable, that when our seniors are moving into their affordable homes, that they're able to get groceries, go to the restaurant, uh, go, go to healthcare appointments, uh, hop on BART, hop on Caltrain, right? Go to the Giants game, whatever you want to do. Um, and, and really be able to continue to be, um, living in South City with the highest quality of life. And that's something that, um, that I am committed to and I hope others can, can continue to, to see that vision as well.
Yeah, you've got your population of 60 and older is going to dwarf your population of 18 and under in just a few years. Um, in Brisbane, we have 55% of our community is over the age of 50 at this point. And those who live on those houses on the hill have no way to get down. What Brisbane did, and I think the program's working really well, it came from Sausalito, is Brisbane Village Helping Hands. And you can be a member and a volunteer. And most of the requests for service, which is free, um, to, uh, anybody who joins, is somebody can give you a ride to the doctor's appointments and anywhere you need to go. So that might be a consideration in a bigger city, obviously it's much more difficult to manage, but it's a thought.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Vice Mayor, anything? Okay, good. Um, just wanted to also point out something that really kind of struck with me and that's the kindness campaign. Very unique, very important, right? As we talk about isolation, uh, we talk about the need also for companionship and many folks don't know how to portray those feelings, how to be able to share the feelings. Uh, during many of these, um, individuals lifetime, mental health wasn't spoken about.
No.
Mental health wasn't a resource.
That was taboo.
Right. In so many ways. So, you know, there's, there's clear evidence now even as we experience our political turmoil that hurt people hurt others. Hurt people lash out and give hurtful comments when they're themselves are in pain. So the fact that we're addressing respect and addressing kindness, um, that's to be called out. Um, the other thing is that there are many other, you know, subdivisions of this in the action plan. Invite folks to, to, that if you are interested to definitely dive into it, but just want to acknowledge, uh, the work of CAFE and being able to support South San Francisco in getting to this point too. And, and you're the right person to be on, on this too. Thank you.
Thank you. And you know what? It, it is a living, morphing document. It's just a roadmap. It's not like you've identified this today. That's how it has to stay. This has got to be a moving document. And, you know, oh gosh, we're going to do this next week. No. Next week, something might come up that's very, very different.
Very true, very relevant too.
And I'm your neighbor. Call me anytime.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Any public comments on this?
No public comments, Mayor.
Great. I will now, uh, take a motion to approve the resolution adopting the city of South San Francisco age friendly action plan. Uh, Councilmember, um, Nicholas, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion.
All right. And I will second it. Can I have roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagales?
Yes.
Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Motion passes, resolution approved. Thank you again, Karen.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much. Thanks for.
Thank you, Laura. And thank you, everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, too, Parks and Rec and Sharon.
Yes, yes, of course. Okay. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Item number 22 is a report regarding an, um, an update on Launch Local, the vacant retail activation pilot program and a resolution approving a sublease agreement with Christopher Nguyen, DBA Six Bicycles for the commercial space of 634 El Camino Real. Item number 22A is the resolution.
Welcome, Ms. Donner.
Hello, welcome. So good evening, Mayor Eddy, Vice Mayor Adiego and Councilmembers. My name is Katie Donner and I'm a Management Analyst in the Economic and Community Development Department. Tonight I am providing an update on Launch Local, the city's vacant retail activation Tonight, I am providing an update on Launch Local, the city's vacant retail activation pilot program, and requesting approval of a sublease agreement with Six Bicycles for 634 El Camino. Tonight marks an exciting milestone in the city's ongoing efforts to reduce storefront vacancies and support local entrepreneurship. With the adoption of this resolution, staff will determine the final tenant improvement allowance of up to $10,000 as a rent credit once eligible improvements are verified. The lease terms are consistent with the Launch Local program guidelines that were previously approved by council. This sublease represents the first tenant partnership under the Launch Local program. For a quick refresher on what's happened so far, the pilot program was approved by council on March 26 following a February study session. Launch Local is designed to reduce vacant storefronts and help first-time, for-profit, brick-and-mortar businesses get established. The pilot utilizes currently vacant, city-controlled, commercial spaces to offer short-term, below-market leases. Key terms include $1 per square foot, triple net rent, up to a $10,000 tenant improvement credit, a 12-month lease, and minimum operating hours of seven hours a day, five days per week. Priority is given to local entrepreneurs and clients of the Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center at the Economic Advancement Center. The pilot site at 634 El Camino Real excluded food service businesses during the pilot phase because the space was not equipped with the kitchen use. Following council directions, staff released a request for interest on April 1 with applications due on May 30. Submissions were evaluated on concept strength, readiness, financial capacity, and activation potential. Outreach was broad and inclusive. We posted on the city website and social media, shared through the Chamber of Commerce, hosted four information sessions, two in-person at 634 El Camino, and two on Zoom, which were recorded. We also made materials available in English and Spanish with other translations upon request. The goal was to ensure accessibility for a diverse range of small business owners. Eight businesses submitted, sorry, eight businesses started the application process, six businesses submitted complete applications, and five met the eligibility criteria. Applicants represented a diverse mix of concepts, including chai drinks, IV vitamin therapy and wellness, a yoga studio, a bicycle shop, a photography studio, and a maker arts retail space with entrepreneurship support. Two finalists were invited for interviews. Staff evaluations focused on readiness, alignment with program goals, and potential to activate the El Camino Real corridor. Both finalists offered strong community benefit concepts, but Six Bicycles stood out for its fit with the site and broader community impact. Six Bicycles is owned and operated by Christopher Nguyen, who has over a decade of experience in business development and bicycle retail. Six Bicycles will provide full-service bike repairs, tune-ups, rentals, and sales. It will also offer group rides and maintenance workshops, engaging the community and promoting safe cycling. The location along El Camino Real, near South San Francisco High School and Centennial Way Trail, is ideal for a bicycle shop. This business venture directly supports the city's active transportation, mobility, and public health goals. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Chris, who is here tonight to share a few words.
And apologize to the Nguyen family that we're keeping bedtime from the kiddos there, so late, so, so sorry, but welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited. I love bicycles. I'm really excited to start this next chapter of cycling, my cycle career, with my family, to have a bike shop, to be able to share the community with them through that is gonna be amazing. Yeah, I think this opportunity is also very exciting to be able to contribute to my city and as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. We're glad to have you. Yes, thank you, thank you. We'll proceed with the presentation, otherwise, is that it?
A little bit more, almost done. So, this sublease covers 1,600 square feet at 634 El Camino Real. Lease terms include $1 per square foot, triple net rent totaling $1,600 per month, a 12-month lease term, a $3,200 security deposit, and up to a $10,000 tenant improvement credit determined by staff upon verification. Keys will be provided once this sublease agreement is fully executed, hopefully very soon, with an anticipated grand opening in spring 2026. Staff will evaluate Six Bicycles' performance and the overall program's success at the end of the 12-month period. The lease will generate approximately $19,000 in rental revenue over 12 months. Six Bicycles will receive up to a $10,000 tenant improvement rent credit once improvements are completed and verified. Minor building maintenance, like restroom repairs and patchwork, will be covered using existing reserve funds from previous leases. There is no anticipated general fund impact. Upon council approval, staff will execute the sublease agreement and coordinate key handover to Six Bicycles. Tenant improvements will begin shortly afterwards. City staff will work with Chris to support a spring 2026 grand opening and celebration highlighting the success of Six Bicycles and the Launch Local program, and inviting the community to participate. In addition, staff received very strong and creative applications through the first RFI, Request for Interest process. We're continuing to work with those businesses, both the ones who submitted applications and those who began but weren't able to complete them, to explore opportunities for participation in future phases of Launch Local. Staff has already begun preliminary discussions with private property owners interested in offering vacant spaces for activation. We're still analyzing how the program could expand to include privately-owned sites while maintaining fiscal sustainability and alignment with city objectives and financial goals. Staff will continue monitoring outcomes and return to council with the recommendation on the program renewal, rent adjustments, or expansion opportunities. This first Launch Local tenant marks an important step in activating the city's commercial corridors and submitting small business growth. So thank you for your time and support of Launch Local, and we're looking forward to celebrating Six Bicycles' grand opening.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate the work on this, leading it. You've been at the helm of this initiative, so it's really exciting to see our first being able to be launched. I'll take comments.
Mr. Mayor, I cannot tell you how excited I am about having this bicycle shop. I've been ragging on the city manager that we need a bicycle shop, we need a bicycle shop. I was tired of bringing my e-bike up to Pacifica, up to their bike shop, so it's nice I can actually now go to South San Francisco for the bike shop. So I'm just excited about this, because we've been building the infrastructure in South San Francisco. I hear it, people are glad that we're doing it. We'll continue to build the infrastructure, but what we're missing was that bike shop, that local bike shop. And I think you're gonna be a huge hit in our local community, and I can't wait to do the first ride to the bike shop. I look forward to going through Centennial Trail, because it's a little dangerous on El Camino on the bikes, and that's something we can work on. And I think something we can, you and I can talk about is how we can improve the corridor on El Camino, because we did it before, where we did a dedicated bike lane. And there was kind of a hit and miss there, but I think as more and more folks realize we have a bike shop there, you're gonna see more and more traffic in terms of bicycles going on El Camino, because that's probably what they're gonna use to get to your bike shop. So, welcome, I can't wait, and much success to your business.
Thank you. I concur with Councilman Nagalas. I think that geographically, it is really the right location. In fact, the next item I think we're gonna be dealing with has to do with what we might envision for El Camino in the first, in the future. Mr. Nguyen, I'm probably the only member of the city council that's ever had a small business. Do you know what you're getting into?
And the reason, the reason I say that is because that first year goes by so very quickly. So I need to understand from my staff, he's having some success there, how do we allow him to stay longer? What's the program after that first year?
So, it's mentioned in the lease agreement that he will need to provide, like, just monthly updates of, like, especially revenues with how the business is going, so we can track to make sure he's going in the right direction and not in the red. And once, hopefully, when we see that positive trajectory in the right direction, things are going well, he's liking it, hopefully, we could make it so it's, rent is just a little bit more expensive to help the city, but to also help him prepare if he ever wanted to expand and have to face a market rate rent. And if, for whatever reason, things went sideways, we will put him in touch with Renaissance and other, like, entrepreneurship services and have that open-door policy with Chris that he can come to us if he needs some help.
When would his lease begin?
We were just talking about that outside. I'm hoping that we will sign it within the next, like, four to six weeks, yeah.
Oh, four to six weeks? I'm just looking at, you know, how recall what it was like, and it is not unusual to be somewhat in the red initially. And I don't know about your business model, but that's really common. So we can't look at just that, we have to look at trends. And I'm interested, it's a triple-net lease, and normally, that puts a lot of burden on the tenant. So how is this different from a standard commercial lease? I assume there's no property tax because it's a city-owned building?
But there's, no, the assessed property tax, I believe.
Nell Seeland, economic and community development director, there is a minor property tax that is paid by businesses. All of our commercial tenants actually get a small property tax assessment. Sky can definitely explain it better than I can, but it is baked into our lease that that is expense paid for by the tenant.
It's baked into the lease, so it's an extra charge to the tenant, it's not part of-
Correct. The county assesses it directly to the business owner, actually.
All right.
This, it's, yes, this is called possessory interest tax. So when a government agency leases a portion of tax-exempt property to a for-profit enterprise, the county assessor looks at what is the value of the portion of the property that's being used for private purposes, and assesses the value of that, of their interest in that portion of the property for the business, and then applies property tax to that company.
So it's not just their improvements to the unit, it's actually the unit itself, the square footage?
Yes.
And does he have any idea what that's going to be? I guess I'm asking whoever put this program together.
I don't believe we've communicated that to him, no.
We don't know yet.
It's, it typically, honestly, it typically takes the county two to three years to even come up with it and impose it. We're getting them-
You're right, they're slammed at the assessor's office.
So it's-
So that might work to Mr. Nguyen's advantage, maybe, you know, they won't get to it for a while, but they will go back to the time that you started.
Correct. A good frame of reference is the properties on Grand Avenue that the city acquired about a year and a half ago, and we only saw the first of these assessed just this year, so it's about a year and a half process for them to even come up with an assessment. That had the misfortune of being reassessed because of our purchase, whereas this property isn't getting reassessed with a higher property tax basis to begin with.
So this is a pretty, pretty new building still, and it shouldn't have any, because normally, a triple-net, if there's a problem with the roof, or any of the plumbing or electrical, that could come to the tenant. Can we insulate him from that?
Absolutely, absolutely, we can insulate him from that.
Does the lease insulate him from that? I mean, when you use the term triple-net, that's all-encompassing.
We can double-check it, but... We, as far as I remember, if the, we were saying, like, from wall to wall, he would be responsible if things came up, but if there was something like massive roof leak from, like, a residential tenant upstairs, like, we would work that out. It's-
One of the nuances of this building is that MidPen owns the improvements around it, so if it's impacts related to the residential units, MidPen is often the one taking responsibility for those. The city has worked collaboratively with our existing tenants there when there are exterior improvements that need to be made, such as signage, or parking improvements, or MidPen painted the facade of the building, that's a MidPen expense.
Where I'm going with this, is it necessary to do a triple-net lease?
No, it is not.
It's a very new building, and so maybe we shouldn't.
Yeah, when we-
If he damages something, that's different, that's outside of-
Correct. And we're not, I think we're using the term loosely to describe, there's no services that the city provides interior to the space. So we are not providing utilities, we are not providing maintenance, we are not providing any of those additional wraparound services. The frontage of the building will be his responsibility. We won't be clearing the sidewalk, or if he wanted to, you know, pressure wash the windows, we wouldn't be doing things like that, that would be his responsibility.
So when this, when this lease starts at $1 a square foot, and it's bringing in $1,600, the offset for the improvements, the tenant improvements that he did undertake, does that happen on the front end, or is it applied evenly through the one year of the lease? In other words, is it upfront that he's forgiven rent for X amount of months to get to that magic number?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's, that's a little more generous, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate your expertise as a landlord, too. This is really important to be able to flush that out.
I want to give him the best chance possible, because I remember there was a bike shop on Grand Avenue, and it was starting to, you know, really come along, and the rent killed it. But I think you're in a better location long term, and you have a better landlord, I know that.
You know, I really envy the spirit, because my parents were entrepreneurs, and I tried my hand on being an entrepreneur in the early 90s, because my husband wanted to, but, you know, it didn't pan out. I went back and did corporate work, because I think that's where I'm better at. Anyhow, I wish you the best on your adventure. In the 38 years, I didn't think, I remember having that bike shop on Grand Avenue. Now, you know, you will be the second one, and I, I'm hoping, because it's an enviable location where you will be, so hopefully, we will see us thrive and succeed. And like the mayor said, so sorry that, you know, we keep you waiting here, the kids are late in their bedtime.
So I don't know if you've attended the Silicon Valley Bike Coalition Bike Summit, but for the past couple of years, they've hosted it here in South San Francisco. And I remember last year, I attended, I welcomed everyone to the great city of South San Francisco, best city in the world. And, you know, as I was socializing with some of the attendees, a lot of them were talking about how there's a missing bike shop up in North County, and how we really, really needed it. And so I'm glad that this is happening, and I'm very, very, I like, I know we're, you know, we're building a lot of infrastructure, we're building those bike lanes, we're doing more, we really treat Vision Zero seriously to where there is gonna be a demand for this, and I'm looking very much forward to it.
Thank you. Just want to share, you know, really, what this council is trying to say is, your success is our success, especially with a new pilot program like this. To Katie, I absolutely agree with reaching out to private and others. The Anti-Displacement Ad-Hoc Committee has blessed this as it was preferred, as a great strategy to move forward on that. Number two, that was their recommendation, so we could expand it to private owners as well, to look at that. It's unfortunate, there was a speaker earlier that said, everything is closed up and down Grand Avenue, and doesn't realize that this is, are the types of initiatives and programs that we're working on to, to address that. I also wanted to say, Mr. Nguyen, happy to connect you as well with Devon and see if there's a partnership with the Every Kid Deserves a Bike program, our Chamber of Commerce, and sure, you've heard about that as well, the Bicycle Coalition, and other business partners that, you know, even with the school district, et cetera, that even our Parks and Rec, that we can make sure that you get the amplified exposure and visibility as well, as we welcome you to our city. So thank you again, as I say to every new business, thank you for choosing to invest here as well, in South San Francisco. And with that, I believe we are moving with a resolution. So do I have a motion to move forward with this item?
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Okay, I have a first.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Well, before we do that, do I have any public comment?
No comments, ma'am.
Great, okay. So first and second, can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagalas?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Yes. Thank you, Katie, and the economic development team as well, and welcome, welcome. Thank you all, and it's time to get to bed, kids. Have a good night. Thank you all. Next item, please, final item.
Item 23 is a report regarding-
Item 23 is a report regarding the El Camino Real Mobility Plan and the Countywide Grand Boulevard Initiative.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Megan Woolley-Ozdal, Deputy City Manager, and tonight we're presenting on the Grand Boulevard Initiative and the El Camino Real Mobility Plan. So very serendipitous that we went after six bicycles. So tonight, as you can see, I'm very happily joined by colleagues from SAM Trans, who are leading the Grand Boulevard Initiative, by a colleague from Caltrans, who owns El Camino Real, and by SMCTA, who provided funding for our El Camino Real Mobility Plan, and will hopefully provide funding in the future. Also by our consultant team, Farr and Peers, and by colleagues in our engineering division, and will be providing an overview over our two projects this evening. We're also interested in hearing from you about your initial considerations and priorities for El Camino Real. And now I'll pass the mic over to my colleagues at SAM Trans.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you so much, Megan. My name is Cassie Halls. I'm the manager of major corridors at SAM Trans, and I'm joined by, as Megan mentioned, Jacob Buffenbarger, who's the System Planning Branch Chief of Marin, San Francisco, and San Mateo Counties at Caltrans Bay Area, as well as Patrick Gilster, who's the Director of Planning and Fund Management at the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, SMCTA. So I'll be giving the presentation, but I will also be giving them an opportunity to speak at the end, and also they'll be available for the Q and A. So just wanted to give you an overview of our Grand Boulevard Initiative, which is a multi-agency partnership to implement transportation improvements on El Camino Real, and a planning study that we are bringing to our board for adoption, called the GBI Action Plan, that will be published this winter. Okay, so the Grand Boulevard Initiative is a partnership between SAM Trans jurisdictions along El Camino Real, including South San Francisco, transportation-focused public agencies, and advocates and business groups in San Mateo County. SAM Trans is working with these partners to lead workshops with staff from all of these jurisdictions. We really appreciate South San Francisco's support and attendance at all of these meetings, as well as public agencies to build momentum around transforming transportation infrastructure on El Camino. This group is called the GBI Task Force, and is working to advance a unified vision focused on mobility and safety on this critical north-south corridor that serves as both the main street of local communities, as well as an important regional connector. So you can see on the slide here, we are leading this corridor-wide program. As I mentioned, we are also developing this cohesive vision from the ground up by convening this task force. And ultimately, what we're trying to do is build momentum towards implementation. So we don't want to just create another plan that sits on the shelf. We want to make it easier for cities to make improvements on El Camino by leading a coordinated countywide process. So this slide just represents all of the activity happening along the corridor. So there are a lot of studies and efforts underway that are tied to the Grand Boulevard Initiative effort. The South San Francisco Study, which Megan and Farr and Peers colleagues will be talking about shortly, is one of many. And so many other cities are having similar discussions, as you'll be having today, about what are the trade-offs and benefits that we want to see on El Camino, and what do we want El Camino to be for the future. And one thing just to note is, the reason why we have both this regional effort and the local efforts moving in tandem, is that El Camino is both a main street for local communities, as well as this important regional connector. So we need to move both the local and regional visioning in lockstep to ensure designs are being moved, that are being moved forward, are community-driven, and context-specific. But we also want a seamless experience for all users of the corridor, whether you are walking, biking, riding, transit, or driving. And we're also, Jacob will be mentioning this at the end, but we also are working very closely with Caltrans on their comprehensive multimodal corridor plan, which is tied to this effort. Okay, so I'm just going to take another couple of minutes to talk about the Grand Boulevard Initiative, or GBI Action Plan. So this is a document that we are very excited to release in the next few months, and this will be the basis of the implementation process that I described. And what this document does is it establishes a corridor-wide vision and assesses the needs in terms of, you know, injury prevention, all the type of improvements, and then establishes a cohesive vision and builds momentum towards implementation. And the basis of this action plan is all of the input that we've received from the task force, and the extensive input from both the city partners, as well as the advocates and business community that have been involved. And the action plan is intended to create a unified framework that the countywide regional and state agencies can establish, and that local agencies can have contributed to. And ultimately, local jurisdictions will select a preferred design as a part of their local planning effort. So we're not prescribing what cities should do, but we're establishing the regional framework. I just wanted to take a second to talk about the vision, and also the problem statements and goals that we have outlined within this action plan. And at the end of this presentation, after my colleagues go, we'll also have an opportunity to have a discussion. So we'll refer back to these slides. But in our most recent GBI Task Force meeting, we worked together to craft a vision for the future of El Camino that can serve as the North Star of our work. And so what came out of this is that people want El Camino to be a safe and vibrant street, where people of all ages and abilities can travel comfortably. So I think it reflects a lot of the sentiments we heard earlier today. Okay, so through the work with the task force, we've identified the following priority problems. So it's easy to, you know, identify problems, the hard part is prioritizing them and figuring out how we want to make those improvements. So what we've done is, we worked with the working group and task force to identify all the types of problems on El Camino, then we narrowed it down to the top problems we wanted to solve, and goals that will allow us to solve those problems. So the problems you see here are all related to safety on top, then mobility, and then process. So these were the top pain points that we heard from all of the cities and other partners. So we heard that El Camino Real has unusually high rate of fatal or serious injury crashes, particularly for people biking and walking. And so our approach to this, and what we're documenting in the goals of the action plan, is to adopt a safety-first mindset to eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes. And then under mobility, we are recognizing that El Camino Real has a highway-like design that discourages walking, biking, and transit use. So we want to transform El Camino Real into a complete street that works for all users. And then lastly, we're hearing from our city partners that it's too challenging to develop, implement, and fund transportation projects on El Camino Real. And so we are working to create a new framework for change that aligns vision, process, and funding. This is just an example of some of the menu of options that we are presenting to cities in terms of the streetscape changes that cities could implement. And we're seeking for cities to have seamless facilities across city boundaries. So we don't want a bike lane that ends at, you know, city of, the South San Francisco, and, you know, kind of a piecemeal experience. We want to have continuous facilities as much as possible. So these are some of the examples. You'll see these put to action in the next presentation. But, you know, items related to safety, you know, how can we best address pedestrian, as well as auto and bike safety, active transportation, and transit. So I'm going to speak to this slide shortly, and then I'll invite the TA and Caltrans to speak to it as well. However, this slide, I recognize it's very wordy and very technical. But at a high level, what this shows you is that we are on the far-left side. So we're currently in the conceptual planning phase, we're in what's called the GBI Action Plan, and then we'll be moving into the next step, which is called the Project Initiation Document at the beginning of next year. And then we'll move into the design phases and construction. So what this tells you is that this is going to be a very long process, and it's going to cost a lot of money. So we don't have the years on there right now, but most likely this will take eight to 10 years, and it could take upward of $750 million all the way to $1 billion. So this will be one of the largest projects we undertake in San Mateo County. And it's very needed. So, you know, we know that this is a big priority for all of our partners. But I just wanted to make sure that the expectation is set from the beginning in terms of how long this will take and how much it will cost. However, the benefit of having SAM Trans, the TA, and Caltrans at the table, you know, leading this effort, is that we can bring our skill set in terms of grant writing, and seeking these big federal, state, local grants. Often, projects are more competitive when it's, you know, a whole corridor versus an individual jurisdiction. So we're going to be a partner in this effort to make sure that these components are deliverable, and that we can find funds to meet this. So I'm going to hand it off to Patrick Gilster first.
Thanks, Cassie.
Thank you.
Nice to see all of you this evening. Patrick Gilster, Director of Planning and Fund Management with the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. Excited to be here tonight. It was important for Jake and I to be here to show our support for this effort, and to make sure that cities understand how much the Transportation Authority and Caltrans are invested in this effort. As you can see, that $750 million shocking corridor number, so that's the entire corridor number, it's a lot of money. For context, the current express lanes project was about $550 million. So when we're looking at, on El Camino, it's more money, but we have, as Cassie was saying, a lot bigger hopes that when we are coordinating across city boundaries, there's a lot more benefits that can be seen from El Camino Real. The Transportation Authority, we have our different highway buckets of funding, so we can spend up to about 50% of that $750 million from our highway program to help reduce the burden to any one city. Our hope with this being a larger coordinated effort is that the burden to any city is actually pretty minimal. Now, we can get external grant sources to actually help fund as much of this as possible, so that the rest of our funds locally can be spent on other priorities. So that's really what we're here to help with and support, is that over this life cycle, that the Transportation Authority can help use our expertise, working with Caltrans and working with SAM Trans, to help either deliver or help get you the funding that you need to do that as well. So looking forward to the continued partnerships on all of this over the years. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jake.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Hello, thank you for having me, council. My name is Jake Buffenbarger. I'm Assistant Planning Branch Chief at Caltrans District 4. Just wanted to kind of explain Caltrans' role in all this. So first of all, Caltrans is the owner-operator of Highway 82. And we're required to engage in long-range corridor planning for the facilities that we own and operate. And how we do that, like a lot of things at Caltrans, has changed radically in the last five, 10 years. We're less of a car-centric agency now as we used to be. Now, there's a lot of focus on bicycles, pedestrians, all that good stuff, transit. Our most robust long-range planning document is called the Comprehensive Multimodal Corridor Plan, or CMCP for short, as just demonstrated in the previous slide. Essentially, this document explores the existing and future conditions of a facility, and recommends projects to improve it. The document tackles a wide range of issues and examines all modes of travel. While District 4 has completed many CMCPs for traditional freeway facilities, this is our first CMCP for a conventional highway. And because of the critical nature and unique features of El Camino Real, we're adjusting our standard operating procedure for this CMCP, because we understand that on a corridor like El Camino, it takes extensive partnerships with regional and local stakeholders. And that's why we're extremely pleased to partner with SAM Trans, the TA, CCAG, and all the local cities along the peninsula on this CMCP, and on the ongoing GBI efforts. We plan to directly incorporate both the vision from the GBI, and the projects determined in the action plan into the CMCP. And we plan to use the GBI stakeholder framework to be the backbone of our engagement strategy moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I'll just end by saying, I thank you so much for letting us present today, and thank you also to the TA for funding the GBI Action Plan, supporting funding for that effort. So I'll hand it off to Taylor.
Great.
Megan.
You get me again for a while. Well, thank you so much, Cassie, Patrick, and Jacob. So we wanted to speak a little more about our South San Francisco's El Camino Real Mobility Plan. So as Cassie very clearly shared, GBI is really a regional effort. So all of the communities from Daly City down to Menlo Park, and actually Palo Alto as well, are participating in this conversation. But we in South City really saw a value in having a very local vision for El Camino Real. We really wanted a South San Francisco-informed vision for our portion of the street. And so myself, along with Matt and John in engineering, have been leading this effort to conduct community engagement, and help visualize what our section really could be. So for our corridor, our plan will focus on El Camino Real from the Town of Colma city limits to, down to the city limits with San Bruno. The Town of Colma is a little bit further in their process, in that they are planning for a separated bikeway for their stretch of El Camino Real. And we will be tying into the separated bikeway with a shared-use path in the northern area of El Camino Real down to Hickey. So our work is really building upon the vision set forth in the 2040 General Plan, that El Camino Real is a dynamic and re-envisioned boulevard that is a safe and healthy place for transit riders, pedestrians, bicyclists, and has a diverse mix of commercial, residential, and open-space uses. So we kicked off our project in July, and we're currently in our first phase of engagement. As a next step, we're going to pull all of the community feedback and all of the data together to develop initial concept designs for El Camino Real. We'll then bring back the initial concept designs for the community's review and input in early Our mobility plan process will wrap up in the spring, so that our initial concept designs can fold into GBI's PID process, PID process. Oh, I'm skipping ahead on myself. But even after that, we'll still have the opportunity to continue to refine the designs. There is design iteration that occurs throughout the Caltrans PID process. So we can continue to design to suit the community's needs, and fold in best and emerging practices as time goes on. And then if approved by Caltrans, as Cassie mentioned, we're hopeful we could begin construction in the next maybe six to eight years, depending on what the recommendations are for the South San Francisco portion. So recognizing that El Camino Real is a critical north-south corridor in South San Francisco, we really want to hear from as many businesses and residents as we can about the vision for the future of the street. So we've been reaching out to our community members, first it, well, through our boards and commissions, through Concert in the Park surveys, and citywide communications, including the mayor's newsletter, through door-to-door outreach to businesses on El Camino Real, in partnership with Ernesto Lucero and our Economic Development Division, and then also upcoming outreach to transit riders. Just as sort of a snapshot, while we were at Concert in the Park, we counted the number of smiley face stickers that our poster has. We spoke with, and the stickers totaled 360. So we spoke with, I would wager 400 community members, because not everyone put a sticker, maybe one person put one for the family. And so we really heard from many community members who weighed in on their top priority for El Camino Real, as shown on this poster, which is now difficult to see. But the participants really preferred the options for wider sidewalks and protected bikeways, when we spoke with them. So next week, we're holding a community workshop on Thursday, October 30th, at 6:30 PM, in the Social Hall here at the Library Parks and Recreation Center. We really invite everyone from the community to join us. We'll have a light meal, translation, and free childcare. And recognizing that it's the day before Halloween, we'll also have prizes for folks who come in costume. Our online survey is also still live for people who aren't able to join us in person for the workshop. And at this point, I'd now like to turn it over to our team at Farr and Peers, who's going to talk through some considerations if we do reduce the number of travel lanes. We do want to note that in the interest of time, we've kind of truncated the next couple of slides, we've removed a couple of slides. So if you're viewing it on the PDF from the agenda item, we will skip ahead to the section that says road diet considerations.
All right. I think I'm the last speaker on the last item, so bear with me.
All right, I think I'm the last speaker on the last item, so bear with me. So this section talks about road diet considerations. And before I talk about what is a road diet, I wanted to just take a brief moment to talk about what El Camino Real looks like today. You all are familiar, but just a couple notes. One, south of Hickey, it is three lanes in both directions with a turn lane at some intersections. It is very auto-oriented. There is much more space on the corridor, obviously, for cars. There are small sidewalks on both sides in most places on the corridor, but there are sections where sidewalks are missing, such as near South San Francisco High School. So it's kind of a mixed bag for pedestrians. In some places, there are wider sidewalks with trees. The same is true for transit. In some locations, transit stops have shelter, shade, great pedestrian scale lighting, and in some places, there is no shelter and kind of just a sign on the side. So really, a mixed experience for pedestrians, transit, and then the improvements to bicycling were noted at different points in this meeting, but there are some striped bicycle lanes near Kaiser, but that's a very small section and it's not protected, it's just a striped bicycle lane. The corridor, of course, does parallel Centennial for most of the trails, so that is in Port, Centennial Way Trail for most of the corridor, so that's important to keep in mind. But the point is, the general plan, which was adopted in 2022, says that this corridor is a re-envisioned corridor. We haven't actually taken the opportunity to do that yet, and so that's why this planning effort is so important. We're looking to do more than make just small adjustments around the edges of El Camino. This is really an opportunity to re-envision. And so, that's why we're kind of opening it all up and saying, is there an opportunity where we adjust both what is happening on the curb lane, as well as the potential for removing a travel lane in both directions? Again, this is only south of Hickey. We're not removing a travel lane north. There's only two in each direction north of Hickey. So this would mean we would remove a travel lane in each direction, and there would be two travel lanes, both northbound and southbound. And what that would allow us to do is, there would be more space where we could rebalance this pretty significant chunk of land in South San Francisco to better serve residents, businesses, and travelers. And so, the curb lane today, sometimes it's just a shoulder where parking is not allowed, but you can pull off. Sometimes parking is allowed on the shoulder, and then sometimes it's used for a transit stop. The second lane there, kind of closer to the other two travel lanes, is a travel lane for vehicles, buses, trucks today. So what we are exploring is, what are the two options that we could kind of pair in these two question mark lanes, essentially? So for the options are, continue to use one of those as a travel lane, or on-street parking, a wider walking pedestrian environment that would allow not only plenty of space for people to walk, but also additional street furniture like benches, lighting, trees, a landscaped buffer. The bicycle option, we are only considering a protected bicycle lane on El Camino. That's the only appropriate facility, given the volumes and speeds. So if we add a bicycle lane, it will have to have a buffer. In this case, it's shown as a planted buffer. And then, the final option we're considering is a transit-only lane. This could be used by SAM Trans buses and by the South City Shuttle, as well as any future micro-transit, if that's an option for the senior aging-in-place program. But it could be used by basically high-capacity vehicles and transit publicly-accessible vehicles. And so, this, of course, presents a pretty big change for El Camino, and we want to acknowledge that and say that a number of things could change if we did repurpose one or two of these lanes, especially two of them. So, safety could change, travel time, travel choices, the street space would be better aligned with city policies, space for walking, bicycling, transit improvements, and landscaping would all change and increase. And then, of course, the atmosphere and really the experience would be different. I'm going to walk through each of these in a little more detail. So, safety. We, of course, want safety on all of our roads, but it's really important that we focus on safety on this corridor, because it is the deadliest corridor in the Bay Area. And that is not an exception in South San Francisco. Cassie mentioned that this is an especially dangerous corridor for bicyclists and walkers, that's true, but it is also true for auto drivers in South San Francisco. And what we know about road diets, when you reduce the number of lanes, is it improves safety. So, El Camino is a divided highway, so it is a six-lane divided highway, that's the blue line on this graph. If we reduced the number of lanes to four, it would drop down to that light blue line. That's a 50% reduction in collisions. So this is one of our best tools to improve safety on the corridor, is to actually reduce the number of travel lanes. This will also improve outcomes for bicyclists and pedestrians, but I wanted to note that this is also about drivers. So, and I mentioned it might change travel times. So today, there are more lanes than needed along El Camino Real. We took, we collected traffic counts at the location with the highest vehicle delay today, which is just south of Westboro Chestnut, in the northbound direction, and the amount of delay at that location is acceptable for most of the day. That's what the columns show on the left. If you move forward with a road diet and reduce one lane, the evening peak hour experience may be more congested, especially in the northbound direction. But this is a worst-case scenario, and that's because we just mapped the volumes we saw today onto a future with a road diet. And the reason we don't think those exact volumes are going to map is because every time a road diet has taken place around the Bay Area and elsewhere, they, road diets reduce the number of vehicles on the road. And that's because people shift their behavior. So for shorter trips, people can shift away from cars to other modes. And on El Camino Real, 20% of trips are under three miles. So these are trips that are really, it's possible to shift them to transit, to walking, and to biking. So some of those trips we were seeing, those might shift. Another reason, way people might shift is by traveling at a different time of day or by taking a different route. So if 20% are kind of local, three miles and under trips, 40% of trips are longer than 10 miles, which means they're mostly just driving right through South San Francisco. These trips could shift to 280 or Hunipuracera, and it would actually allow El Camino to really just manage local travel. So for these reasons that people shift their behavior, and again, this is something we see time and time again with road diets, we think that actually travel, vehicle traffic would be lighter. So, all of that is to say that we think there is strong potential for a road diet on El Camino. We haven't decided that is going to be moving forward in the next alternative, but we are definitely considering it. And that is because all of these factors point to alignment with city policies and goals. So a decrease in crashes, a potential increase in vehicle delay, but that also means decreased vehicle speeding, which is the number-one cause of collisions on El Camino, and again, kind of just loops back to the decrease in crashes, increased alignment with city policy, and then increased space for things that we heard a lot of excitement about in the first rounds of engagement, biking, walking, transit, and landscaping. So, Megan?
Yes, thank you.
We're wrapping up now?
Yes, we are. We are, this is our last slide. So just to say, I want to say thank you to all my colleagues for their presentation, and we are open to questions. So thank you so much for your time.
Great. Thank you, Megan. Thank you to all our partners to be able to be here. Apologies, you were kicked to the very last item here. Lots of information there, we will be sure to review it. If there are any other comments from my colleagues here, our TA representative, council member, Mike Wallace.
Thank you. I feel like I'm having PTSD of the 101 managed lane conversation when I see road diets. So, I do have a little bit of concerns about the road diet, because when I'm looking at kind of where the timeframe is, and I do agree, when you made that right turn on El Camino from Westboro, it's a mess. And what you're seeing is a lot of parents driving their kids to school, and that may their fare getting to South City High School or El Camino Real. That's going to really affect a lot of parents driving their kids to school if you reduce the road diet there. But I do appreciate kind of what we're talking about here in terms of the seamless transit. And one of the things I want to really harp on is kind of uniformality, the things I could say, amongst other cities. Like, it's great if we do like a dedicated bike lane for that corridor, but then it stops at the San Brito-South City line, and what was the whole purpose of that? You know, you need a complete Class 4 bike lane. I mean, the dream is to have a full Class 4 bike lane on El Camino Real, right? And I'm looking at, Patrick, it's $750 million, and Patrick, you're the guy who gets us money. But, you know, each city might have a different priority, right? Us, we might want to have that Class 4 dedicated bike lane, because we just saw the previous presenter, he's going to have a bike shop, and it makes sense to kind of have a protective bike lane on El Camino corridor. But San Bruno might want to have a dedicated bike, a bus lane, in their corridor. And so, kind of having a uniformality amongst the cities is really, really important. But I am excited about this idea, because I was mentioning earlier, when we did kind of the test pilot, Patrick, when we did the 101, the El Camino Real dedicated bike lane, one of the things I really liked was this elevated kind of bus stop. And I think that actually should go along the El Camino corridor, is something you guys take a look at to do, because I actually saw people using that, and they were really excited about that. And so, in terms of buses, that's something you should take a look at. That's all I have for now. I'll bother Patrick later about this, the TA meetings.
All right, thank you. Anyone else with comments or questions? Go ahead.
Sure. Okay. This is great. I love this. So, I agree with my colleague, uniformity is key, and I'm open to the road diet, but the biggest thing is, it should be uniform up and down the whole county, whether we choose bike lane, and I don't know how you're going to do it, maybe a majority of cities say one thing, and then it becomes what we do, I don't know. But I think it really does have to be continuous. Looking at the map, I looked at the map of the ECR. So I think right now, I'm kind of leaning bike lane. And it's because BART and Caltrain already kind of serves that north-to-south connectivity through transit, right? Like, maybe you don't want to, well, some people do, but maybe you don't want to bike all the way from Menlo Park all the way up to South City, but you can take the Caltrain and then transfer to BART, and you're still kind of on that north-south, near-to-El Camino Real corridor. In which case, if you want to fill the need for active transportation, then it would probably be a protected bike lane that you're looking at. I know South City, and I'm thinking regionally here, right, but I know South City, we have Centennial Way Trail that kind of serves that. So below South City, is there some sort of road, separated road like Centennial Way Trail? There's not, so that might be the need. It might have to be a protected bike lane that we have up and down. And that being said, I still, a couple things that, so we did do a, we did do a pilot program with the separate bus, sorry, the bike lanes, but also with bus bulbs, which were really big in terms of just lowering the time spent at a stop, and the bus wants to merge back, and of course, no one wants to let the bus merge. And the key in, a key part in ensuring that our transit systems are well utilized is ensuring that they are fast and that they are reliable. And so, as much as we can make that happen with, you know, beautiful bus shelters that also have little signs, I always talk about this, they have the signs that say, oh, the next bus is coming in three minutes, and then you know it's going to come, and you're not waiting there in the rain for like an hour and it never comes. But making sure that we have the bus shelters, digital signs, and that our buses themselves have the infrastructure that allows them to be fast and reliable. So that's kind of what I'm looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to, I know this has been talked about for a good amount of time, and some time ago, there was an idea that we might have dedicated bus lanes in the center of El Camino Real. And, you know, for a time, I lived in San Francisco, and while Van Ness was an easy way to get to my home, it was such a disaster with the buses along the curb lane, having to wait for them before you could make your right turn to get off of Van Ness. And I've driven it since, and it's just, it's remarkable. And I understand that the time, you know, you talk about efficient and moving people, and the safety of being in the median on a raised platform, and then for our public safety people, the police or the ambulances can use that same dedicated bike lane. Now, I don't imagine whatever we do is going to be applicable to Burlingame, because they don't have the wide expanse of roadway, but certainly in the North County, if you could imagine dedicated bus lanes in the center, all the way from the Burlingame-Milbury border into San Francisco, it's an incredible game changer.
Thank you for that. I can't tell you how many residents constantly ask me for bus shelters. Constantly. And I, not only for the rain, it's actually the other opposite, when it's really, really sunny. And it's that mom, you know, going to three jobs. We talk about moving people away from cars and into transportation, and many of our, you know, disadvantaged members of our communities have to work three jobs. They can't bike to all those three jobs, right? But I do see them carrying bags, and I've spoken to Sharon many times about how else can we move about bus shelters? So if you'd asked me what the priority is in key strategic areas, particularly around the high school, around, you know, key areas with high foot traffic, would be that, and bus cutouts too, you know? I see it also in El Camino, how many delays at all, right? It just creates a big old backup. Thank you, thank you again for hearing us, for listening, and continuing the partnership and the collaboration and the support on this initiative. This is a report-only item, but do we have any public comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. If not, thank you again.
Mr. Mayor, I actually have one more question. The gentleman that was from Caltrans District Four, are you the right person to talk to about pavement conditions?
Not really.
Oh, okay. Good answer.
But tell your colleague, whoever that is, that we are interested in talking. How about trash on the on-and-off freeway?
I'm early planning stages.
You've had a problem with that.
Also, 280 on-and-off ramps. Yeah, just a list of things here. Megan, thank you again. Next agenda item, please.
Well, moving along to items from Council, committee reports and announcements.
Anyone have any committee report? Go ahead, council member.
I do. I wanted to save these towards the end, just because there's a lot of things in the beginning. Okay. So I understand that city staff will be, or potentially our friends at Townsend will be presenting kind of like a legislative report of all the mini-bills that were passed and kind of the impacts, but I do want to kind of highlight two bills. The first one, housing-related, SB 79. It upzones areas that are within a half-mile of a transit station, which includes our Caltrain station and our BART station. What it also does is it allows us to create a local zoning plan to move densities in a way that may make more sense for our local jurisdiction. So I would like, you know, I've already talked to some of our ECD staff members, and I would like to see if that would make sense for us. And we would probably have to do so before July of next year, as that is when SB 79 officially takes effect. Second bill that piqued my interest was SB 42, which legalizes the public financing of campaigns for general law cities. And the reason this interests me is because I believe that money in politics is a scourge of our electoral system, and more, and more often, we're starting to see outside money really flooded into our local elections, not just here, but nationwide. And what many cities have implemented throughout the country, and usually we think of the big cities, but what they do is they allow for public dollars to match the contribution, the small-dollar contributions of residents of that city. And so, this could, what it could do is empower our residents and our neighbors if they can decide can decide to contribute to any candidate, that they can have the dollars go farther than, let's say, a contribution that comes from someone who is from out of town, out of state, who knows where they're from. And so, that's something that I would like to discuss with the council, to see if that is something that we could do in a way that makes sense, right? Of course, we're not going to give anyone a million dollars, you know, maybe 5,000 makes the most sense as a maximum, but that way, we can have more competitive campaigns and really see democracy thrive in our city. The third thing is, we had a HEART meeting earlier today, Housing Endowment and Regional Trust Board of San Mateo County, and they are taking a page out of the playbook of South San Francisco. So, you may remember that we passed Measure AA in South City, passed by 20 points in 2022, and we were very forward-thinking in doing so, and I think, you know, it's very proud that we had, you know, the support from the city council and such a large amount of support from the population here, really sending a message saying, we want more affordable housing, and we want the city to have a direct hand in doing so. But moving forward to, I believe, 20, I don't even know what year it was, 2023, 2024, we saw that Article 34 had a very, was a roadblock on an issue very local to our county. And now, the HEART Board, through leadership of the HEART Board, as well as the county, what they're looking at potentially is a county-wide ballot measure that would authorize the construction of locally-owned affordable housing through Article 34. And what a lot of cities are worried about is, you know, many of them are hearing about Article 34 for the first time, and maybe they're a little scared, they're a little worried, but we passed it, our city has not burned down. We actually have our hands free, and we can do more things. And I think it's incumbent upon us to communicate that to other cities, to let them know that there's nothing to worry about. And actually, this provides another tool in our tool belt to meet our revenue numbers and provide more affordable homes for all of our families. So, I hope we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee? Go ahead.
Well, being on, you know, what we can do in the future, and I'm so glad that Director Seelander has stayed here, because something that's been bothering me for a good amount of time, and it seemed like the perfect time to share it with my colleagues, about 20 years ago, when I was running for office and coming back into the game, I mentioned that I thought El Camino Real was, you know, a bit of a blight, you know, end to end. And we've seen some improvement, you know, what's happening down at Spruce and El Camino finally. But when I drive by the old Arby's, and I realize that it's been in that condition for 10 years, and I don't know that anybody has any plans for it, but then I drive by the old Burger King, and there are plans for that, but yet we have these dilapidated buildings that are drawing down the entire neighborhood, do, I don't need an answer tonight now, but do any communities have any way of encouraging the raising of buildings that obviously have no more purpose on the strip? And is there some way to require that? Because, I mean, 10 years in a dilapidated state is so difficult for the adjoining businesses and the neighborhood generally.
Thank you for that. I wanted to update the council here. As of this September, BART Board President Foley has re-established what he's calling liaison appointments for the San Mateo County stations. What this mean, what this means is, obviously, we don't have an elected BART Board member, but within three BART Board members, I believe, who currently represent San Francisco and some East Bay, that we will have one assigned to us, that we will have as a liaison. We will reach out and connect, and we'll start off with BART Director Victor Flores. He will be our board liaison for both the South San Francisco Station and the Colma Stations. We will start off with a tour, city manager will schedule that, and it will be an ongoing relationship that then this council can have with a directly elected member of the BART Board. Wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that. All right. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to next agenda items and wrap this up.
Moving along to closed session, item number 25, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, name of case, Brown Phillips versus City of South San Francisco. Compensation, appeals board case number ADJ 19626532. Name of case, workers' compensation claims numbers 21002462 and 24002264. Item number 26, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 6.94, two potential cases.
Thank you. We will adjourn to closed session. Thank you, everyone, for tonight. Have a good night.